What you've gotten with the initial grief.
Right, right.
It's difficult.
Right, right.
We were lucky when she came back to visit us at midnight and I was in bed. And when we woke up, and she told me, "There goes the shelter, and give her the dog." And that's when I met Sadie. They called her Rose. And she was scheduled to be put down the next day.
I'd like to ask the deputy city clerk to please call the roll. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a brief moment of silence afterwards?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk posted orders of adjournment of the July 8th, 2025 meeting and the meeting of the July 22nd, 2025 meeting in accordance with state law, city council, and housing We have two presentations on today's agenda. The first is a presentation from the Delmar Fairgrounds. Will the representative from the fair please come up to share with us about this?
I'm with Southwest Strategies. I'm here on behalf of the 22nd District Agricultural Association. We're here to talk about Fairgrounds 2050, which is the 22nd DAA's master site planning process. So just want to share a little bit of info on that. To get started, I just want to kind of provide an overview of the 22nd DAA and the Delmar Fairgrounds. The DAA is a state institution that owns and operates the Delmar Fairgrounds. They're comprised of a board of directors, nine members, all appointed by the governor. The district is not taxpayer-funded. It's all self-revenue funded through events like the San Diego County Fair, horse racing, and the shows and concerts that they do there. On the map here, we have all the properties that the 22nd DAA owns and operates. It includes the main Fairgrounds campus, the Surf and Turf Park, which is just across Jimmy Durante Boulevard, and then the Horse Park, which is just south of Villa de la Vieille, a little further east from the main property. As you can kind of see, and as I'm sure everyone's familiar with having been to the property, it's surrounded by sensitive ecosystems. You have the beach right there, you have Stevens Creek and the lagoon. This is something that the district takes very seriously as a steward to manage that and its impacts. Delmar Fairgrounds is best known for some of these marquee events. Of course, the San Diego County Fair, which just wrapped up, horse racing, which is just starting to kick off, and then there's a concert venue there, the Sound at Surfside, which is relatively new, but they bring in shows year-round. All in all, these attractions, as well as the additional events that the property hosts every year, brings its economic impact to the region of about $682 million a year. So Fairgrounds 2050, as I noted earlier, this is the master site planning process that the district is taking on. Ultimately, the Delmar Fairgrounds is a regional asset, and we want to make sure that it continues to serve the San Diego County region in every corner well into the future. So the district is embarking on a master site planning process to think about how the property can be used into the future and how it can best continue to serve the region. As part of this, the Board of Directors adopted these guiding principles that are on the screen here to help guide this process. And ultimately, the key takeaway is this is meant to be a public forward process, it's not a developer-forward process. So we're going out into the community and starting to draft this vision before we take any real concrete steps of putting together a plan. To kind of guide that effort, we have what we affectionately refer to as the Candy Land Board Map here. Really what this is, is outlining our public outreach and engagement process. We're currently in the green phase of this map, which is our public outreach and listening tour. As part of this, we're doing a couple of key activities. We just completed a countywide survey of, you know, San Diego residents from every corner of the region. This is statistically significant, and really what it was is testing folks' priorities and their sentiment around what a future Fairgrounds could look like. We've assembled a pro bono technical advisory coalition. This is comprised of technical experts in land use, you know, stormwater, environmental assessment. They're helping us set the guardrails for what's technically feasible in the master site planning process. We're doing outreach to all cities in the region. Part of what we're doing here tonight is to make sure that, you know, we share this info. And then we're also going to be meeting with regional boards in the county as well. Later this fall, we're going to be doing regional open houses, which I'll get to more in a bit. And ultimately, all this is going to come together as inputs for what the public wants the property to continue to operate as into the future. And the Board of Directors is going to adopt a set of design principles, which will be used to host an international design competition. That's where we hope to attract the best and brightest minds from around the world to help us really craft that master plan. And once all that's done, then we'll start the environmental process, go through CEQA, which will ultimately need approval from the Board of Directors and California Coastal Commission. So that's that. We're at the very early stages of trying to raise awareness. On the horizon, though, we do have these regional workshops. We plan on doing one in every supervisory district in the county. So we'll be out, we'll be back out here. We want to share that info as we get closer to that date. We want to invite the public. We'd love to have you all come. This will be an opportunity to meet with some of the experts from the district, provide input, and continue to help us craft this vision. If you want to learn more about this process, I encourage you to visit delmarfairgrounds.com/2050. You can also scan the QR code right here. We have a survey on there where we're collecting input from folks. And then there's also more information about our process. So just wanted to share some info on this, make sure you're all aware of it, and happy to take any questions if there are any.
Let me see those questions. Anybody have questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have accommodation for Tom Weller, the highway man. Tom, are you here? Oh, hi, Tom. Come on up. Council, would you come down to the well with me and help us read this? While Mr. Weller is meeting with everybody, thank you for being here today. Mr. Weller, Tom Weller, is a kind of a treasure in El Cajon. He has, I haven't lived in El Cajon in my life. My wife has. She was born here, and she remembers all her life seeing your Ghostbusters car going up and down the freeway, stopping and helping people, never asking for money.
Who are you going to call?
Yeah, Tom Weller. And just because he's a great guy, he's helped thousands and thousands of people who were stranded on the road. And that's just an amazing thing. We wanted to take just a minute to give him this proclamation. Mr. Weller, do you mind if I read this for you real quick? I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas Tom Weller, a 77-year-old resident of El Cajon, has assisted over 10,000 drivers in need, changing tires, jump-starting batteries, and offering rides without ever requesting payment or recognition in return. Whereas Mr. Weller's selfless service and unwavering commitment to roadside assistance have garnered national recognition and admiration, and have brought honor to the city of El Cajon by exemplifying the highest ideals of community service and goodwill. And whereas his acts of kindness have inspired countless others, creating a legacy of generosity and reinforcing the values of empathy, safety, and civic responsibility within our community. Now therefore, I, Bill Wells, mayor of the city of El Cajon, together with the city council, commend Tom Weller for his extraordinary service and dedication, and express our heartfelt gratitude for his decades of heroic contributions. We proudly recognize Tom as a local treasure and outstanding citizen whose example continues to inspire El Cajon and beyond. Mr. Weller, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Steve Goble, thank you for what you've done for me in the past. And I'd like to thank Craig Brown and the East County Posse for what they've done for me and are still doing for me. We needed the The district is not taxpayer funded. It's all self-revenue funded through events like the San Diego County Fair, horse racing, and the shows and concerts that they do there. On the map here, we have all the properties that the 22nd DAA owns and operates. It includes the main Fairgrounds campus, the Surf and Turf Park, which is just across Jimmy Durante Boulevard, and then the Horse Park, which is just south of Villa de la Vie, a little further east from the main property. As you can kind of see, and as I'm sure everyone's familiar with having been to the property, it's surrounded by sensitive ecosystems. You have the beach right there. You have Stevens Creek and the lagoon. This is something that the district takes very seriously as a steward to manage that and its impacts. Delmar Fairgrounds is best known for some of these marquee events. Of course, the San Diego County Fair was just wrapped up, horse racing, which is just starting to kick off. And then there's a concert venue there, The Sound at Surfside, which is relatively new, but they bring in shows year round. All in all, these attractions, as well as the additional events that the property hosts every year, brings its economic impact to the region of about $682 million a year. So Fairgrounds 2050, as I noted earlier, this is the master site planning process that the district is taking on. Ultimately, the Delmar Fairgrounds is a regional asset, and we want to make sure that it continues to serve the San Diego County region in every corner, well into the future. So the district is embarking on a master site planning process to think about how the property can be used into the future and how it can best continue to serve the region. As part of this, the Board of Directors adopted these guiding principles that are on the screen here to help guide this process. And ultimately, the key takeaway is this is meant to be a public forward process. It's not a developer forward process. So we're going out into the community and starting to draft this vision before we take any real concrete steps of putting together a plan. To kind of guide that effort, we have what we affectionately refer to as the Candy Land Board Map here. Really what this is, is outlining our public outreach and engagement process. We're currently in the green phase of this map, which is our public outreach and listening tour. As part of this, we're doing a couple of key activities. We just completed a countywide survey of, you know, San Diego residents from every corner of the region. This is statistically significant, and really what it was is testing folks' priorities and their sentiment around what a future Fairgrounds could look like. We've assembled a pro bono technical advisory coalition. This is comprised of technical experts in land use, stormwater, environmental assessment. They're helping us set the guardrails for what's technically feasible in the master site planning process. We're doing outreach to all cities in the region. Part of what we're doing here tonight is to make sure that, you know, we share this info. And then we're also going to be meeting with regional boards in the county as well. Later this fall, we're going to be doing regional open houses, which I'll get to more in a bit. And ultimately, all this is going to come together as inputs for what the public wants the property to continue to operate as into the future, and the Board of Directors is going to adopt a set of design principles, which will be used to host an international design competition. That's where we hope to attract the best and brightest minds from around the world to help us really craft that master plan. And once all that's done, then we'll start the environmental process, go through CEQA, which will ultimately need approval from the Board of Directors and California Coastal Commission. So that's that. We're at the very early stages of trying to raise awareness. On the horizon though, we do have these regional workshops. We plan on doing one in every supervisory district in the county. So we'll be out, we'll be back out here. We want to share that info as we get closer to that date. We want to invite the public. We'd love to have you all come. This will be an opportunity to meet with some of the experts from the district, provide input, and continue to help us craft this vision. If you want to learn more about this process, I encourage you to visit delmarfairgrounds.com/2050. You can also scan the QR code right here. We have a survey on there where we're collecting input from folks. And then there's also more information about our process. So just wanted to share some info on this. Make sure you're all aware of it, and happy to take any questions if there are any.
Let me see those questions. Anybody have questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have accommodation for Tom Weller, the Highwayman. Tom, are you here? Oh, hi, Tom. Come on up. Counsel, would you come down to the well with me and help us read this? While Mr. Weller is meeting with everybody, thank you for being here today. Mr. Weller, Tom Weller, is a, it's kind of a treasure in El Cajon. He has, I haven't lived in El Cajon my life. My wife has. She was born here, and she remembers all her life seeing your Ghostbusters car going up and down the freeway, stopping and helping people, never asking for money. Yeah, Tom Weller. And just because he's a great guy, he's helped thousands and thousands of people who were stranded on the road. And that's just an amazing thing. We wanted to take just a minute to give him this proclamation. Mr. Weller, do you mind if I read this for you real quick? I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas Tom Weller, a 77-year-old resident of El Cajon, has assisted over 10,000 drivers in need, changing tires, jump-starting batteries, and offering rides without ever requesting payment or recognition in return. Whereas Mr. Weller's selfless service and unwavering commitment to roadside assistance have garnered national recognition and admiration, and have brought honor to the city of El Cajon by exemplifying the highest ideals of community service and goodwill, and whereas his acts of kindness have inspired countless others, creating a legacy of generosity and reinforcing the values of empathy, safety, and civic responsibility within our community. Now therefore, I, Bill Wells, mayor of the city of El Cajon, together with the city council, commend Tom Weller for his extraordinary service and dedication, and express our heartfelt gratitude for his decades of heroic contributions. We proudly recognize Tom as a local treasure and outstanding citizen whose example continues to inspire El Cajon and beyond. Mr. Weller, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Steve Goble, thank you for what you've done for me in the past. And I'd like to thank Craig Brown and the East County Posse for what they've done for me and are still doing for me. We needed the renovations. We couldn't afford them, and they're doing them for us. I'm very grateful. Thank you.
God bless you, Tom. Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah, come on close. Come on in the middle. You're the star. Let's turn this around so they can see it.
I got that one now. I did get it. Thank you.
Cheeseburger. That's my trademark. I do that all the time to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much, sir.
Oh, that's a great story. I like that. All right, agenda changes. Staff, do you have any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, no changes to the agenda.
How about council members? No? Okay. That brings us to consent items. Consent items are routine matters enacted by one motion according to the recommendation listed below. With concurrence of the city council, a council member or person in attendance may request discussion of a consent item at this time. Council members, do you wish to pull any of the consent items? Staff, do you wish to pull any of the consent items?
No, sir.
Jen, do we have any speaker cards for consent items?
There are no speaker cards, sir.
I'd like to make a motion then to approve the consent items. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
That brings us to public comment. At this time, any person may address a matter within the jurisdiction of the city council, housing authority, successor agency to the El Cajon redevelopment agency that is not on the agenda. Comments relating to items on today's agenda are already to be taken at the time that the item is heard. State law prohibits discussion or action on items not on the agenda. However, city council and housing authority members may briefly respond to statements or questions, and an item may be placed on a future agenda. Jen, do we have any speaker cards for public comment?
Yes, sir. There are nine speaker cards. Our first speaker is Chris.
Hello, my name is Chris. I'm going to be providing these handouts to the council. My name is Chris, resident of District One. Earlier this year, Phil Ortiz voted multiple times in support of El Cajon Police working more closely with ICE in spite of California state law SB 54. In his own words, Phil Ortiz maintains that SB 54 does not go far enough in removing criminals from our community, setting drug and other criminal offenses. What Phil and the rest of the city council were unable or unwilling to speak to is just how often and in what way does El Cajon Police currently work with ICE under SB 54, so I conducted my own public records request. While the records returned were mostly useless, duplicative, heavily redacted, and did nothing to report on actual numbers, one email stands out, of which the council has been provided a copy. This is an email response from Chief of El Cajon Police Jeremiah Larson to City Manager Graham Mitchell on January 23rd, 2025, regarding how El Cajon PD interacts with immigration authorities. I direct your attention to the highlighted text, which reads, quote, "If there was a criminal warrant, usually just felonies, in the national system, save from another county or state, the officer would know of the charges. In this case, regardless of illegal or legal status, any officer would make an arrest for outstanding warrants and book them into jail. The jail may or may not provide information to immigration authorities about a hold or warrant, depending on the sheriff's policies at the time," end quote. This email is proof that SB 54 does not stop or hinder El Cajon Police from arresting dangerous criminals within their jurisdiction, regardless of immigration status. Our police make their own judgment calls on how they speak with ICE under SB 54 and have done so without the outrageous and harmful resolutions Phil Ortiz has helped to pass. Phil, either you did not know of this fact, which is easily available to you, and you are negligent in your duties, or you did know and you just don't care. By ICE's own data, almost half of those detained have no violent or drug-related criminal records, and that number grows every day. Agents armed with assault rifles, smoke canisters, and flashbangs raided Buena Forte in South Park, handcuffing the entire staff regardless of who was on the warrant. Families with children were in danger, but still the community came out to resist. The National, excuse me, the National Guard and Marines occupied Los Angeles, and still the people are doing everything they can to monitor, deter, and resist this military-style crackdown. Just weeks ago, hundreds in El Cajon marched to this ferry plaza in the summer heat in solidarity with those just trying to live and work in this country. In my unpaid volunteer work collecting signatures for Your Recall, voters are telling me that they are sickened by the videos of what ICE is doing, that their neighbors are afraid to leave their homes. We are on the ground every week, talking with the people. We warned Phil Ortiz of all of this, and where has he been? At a Bill Wells campaign dinner, where you can buy a seat, starting at $250. Recall Phil Ortiz.
The next speaker is Brenda Hammond.
Well, if Brenda comes later, we'll give her a chance.
The next speaker is Scott Penowell.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having this meeting and allowing me to be here and speak. I'm your representative on the Mission Trails Regional Park Citizens Advisory Council, and I just wanted to give you a little update on what we're doing at Mission Trails. Off the cuff from what the foundation, Mission Trails Regional Foundation or others are doing, it's my report back to you on my last year of service to the citizens and you. Since my appointment, I've attended four meetings. Agenda's been pretty much the same for most meetings, and most often the agenda is about the projects ongoing at Mission Trails. I'm just going to go through some of the projects so you know what's going on and the citizens also know. Visitor Center renovation is going to come in the near future to make it more amenable to visitors versus the rental of the facilities for groups. The foundation decided to up the rental fees. So they're going to do a renovation and make it more suitable for kids and visitors. The bridge for Max is on hold for dollars and possible Army Corps non-concurrence. So the bridge that is almost in the final planning stages, which is very hard to do, has a stop-hold on it for funding. That was the bridge where Max LaNail perished when he was, during a rainstorm last year. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. A few years ago. Ongoing trails work to widen and improve trails is happening. The meetings are very cordial and mostly run by the city staff for the Parks Department. And we have a civilian in charge of the Citizens Advisory Committee. There's two other groups or councils. The foundation, Mission Trails Regional Foundation is one group. They're mostly funding, and there's also a task force that is headed up by council member, name's skipping my mind right now, for the city. Joint Powers Authority Water Project is currently underway. Just rode Hunipur Osara Trail last Saturday, and the pipe is laid. It's on the side of the road. They've closed down the main road that bisects Mission Trails from the Visitor Center out to Santee Mission Gorge, almost to the dam, for traffic. But you can still go there by bike and pedestrian, so it kind of makes it better for the pedestrians and bikes. And I just, I did remind the contractor, or the Joint Powers Authority, that the contractor needed to clean up after themselves because they left a little bit of a mess that I recommended they clean up. And that's all I had. Pending questions.
Any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Is the proposed due bridge in the same spot as the old bridge that goes across, that wooden bridge?
No, that bridge is remaining. The bridge, the new bridge is at the end of Jackson Drive, at the bottom of the steep hill. The trail goes down and then up onto Fortuna Side, and that's where the sewer line runs across. And there's a Arizona Crossing that's, you have to walk through if you want to get to the other side. And that's what Max was doing when he fell and was drowned. So it's a different location. They were a little sketchy on the amount of funding it would require to us, because several people asked. And now the funding is not there, so.
Right. Is that south of the Visitor Center?
Yes, in fact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your hard work on this project.
Thank you.
The next speaker is RJ Luceshi.
I see Brenda's back, so after this gentleman, let's have Brenda come up.
Well, hello again. Nice to see y'all. I can assure you, the pleasure is yours. Phil, good to see you in chambers. I hear you've been missing some city council appointments lately. And the rumor is you're considering resigning. Now, I'm not sure how much I buy that, right? It feels like something Bill Wells came up with watching Matt Lock or something. I don't know. It's Scooby-Doo. I don't know what you watch, brother. But I don't buy it, is my point, you know? It feels like something that you want us, working on the recall campaign, to internalize and slow down. But I can assure you, we're speeding up and building organization right now, regardless of what you're thinking or considering, right? But I did want to mention, we're having a good time in District Four, talking to a lot of people on the doors. You guys are not popular in El Cajon, just to let you know. If we get the chance to talk, you know, others have mentioned it, people are scared. People don't want to answer the door. Does that sound like a safe, healthy community to y'all? No, exactly. But when we do have conversations, it doesn't take a lot of words to convince people to sign the recall. But I do want to suspend my disbelief around your potential decision a little bit, because you did, I think this was authentic. Last time I spoke, you shared at the end, you said, hey, you know, I've had trouble deciding which side to choose, right? Like, I get that. I get that. You know, you said you were bullied by white supremacists. And I, like, heard you. I felt it. And then I saw a video of you standing on the side of white, literal white supremacists with swastikas on their heads in Santee a couple of years ago. At the Y, the YMCA? You don't remember? Yeah, you do. Yeah. They were on your side, is my point. Whether you were standing next to them, they were on the same political side. Do you understand? So my point is to all of you, or maybe some of you, Gary and Michelle didn't vote on this one thing that we're organizing. But you have chosen a side. That's the thing. You need to internalize. You have chosen a side. But this is the good news, right? You're a pastor. You get this, right? I'll speak to you in that way, not in a combative way, in a gracious way. That's the good news, the gospel of our shared tradition, even though we see it very differently, is that you can repent. Forgiveness is a thing. Grace is a thing. Change is possible. So I'm telling you, you can choose again. Repent, resign.
Brenda Hammond.
Hey, Brenda.
Hi. A friend of mine told me a quote, because he hears me talking at the council meetings, and sometimes I have everything written out, sometimes I don't. Marlon Brando, it's a quote from Marlon Brando that says, "A good speaker never knows what they're going to say." So I didn't write any notes, but I want to say this is red, white, and blue. You know, my favorite color is blue, but red, white, and blue for our United States. And remember the Wizard of Oz, the horse of a different color? So we have all these colors, and I don't, I want to say to some of these people and to you, you should be, you should be happy you're in the city you're in, because you could be in another city that's very, very, very racist. So here's my horse, my blue horse, dancing at the concerts. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Brenda.
The next speaker is Jose Cortez.
Hello, everybody. I grew up in El Cajon. My father graduated from El Cajon Valley High School, and this is where I plan to live probably for the rest of my life. Like, I've grown up in East County. I appreciate what we have out here in the inland valleys, our unique culture. And this was the place that my family chose after immigrating from Colombia and during a very violent period of its history. And the fact that our city council has taken such a both performative and simultaneously inept position on the issue of immigration, when the city is defined and built almost exclusively by immigrants, is really disappointing. I've been coming to these meetings since February, when we were seeing the initial debate around the resolution that was so just unnecessarily passed, proactively joining the only other city in California, Huntington Beach, in signing on to a very racist, very far-right Trump agenda. And I have to ask, is when those meetings, it was discussed that these targets, these raids, this was going after criminals and bad people. But right across the street from my house, right near Bostonia Center, the raid on St. Paul's Pace, the assisted living facility that provides health care and resources to elderly people and the most marginalized people. Who are those dangerous people? The elders that were leaving their home in a trailer park to go get medical care, that were targeted by ICE, and then conveniently the El Cajon PD shows up right immediately afterwards? Are they the dangerous people that are affecting our society? Because frankly, it seems like the people whose agenda you're backing are the more dangerous people. They're the ones who are stripping money from Medicaid and offering up our information, our HIPAA-protected information and private data, to be used by masked, completely unaccountable kidnappers to target our most dangerous, like, our most marginalized and insecure people, right? The people that are, like, afraid to even go get medical care, or go get groceries, or even go to service, Phil. These are people that are, like, having to choose very tactically how they even just conduct themselves and live because of the fear that El Cajon willingly and just really for a cheap bit of political theater, signed itself up for. And so as an organizer, like, that intends to live here for a good long while and is pretty familiar with people like longtime mayor Bill Wells, we are going to organize our own candidates. We're going to organize our own campaigns. We're not going to depend on appealing to your humanity and goodness, because obviously, as people of faith, that hasn't been working. You haven't rolled back this resolution. You haven't taken into account the targeted actions affecting elderly people and sick people. So just be prepared for the coming cycle in 2026. When you see real working-class organizations and real working-class people come for the seats that you so comfortably sit in and do, like, very performative, safe actions with, because at the end of the day, government's supposed to serve its people, not serve their own interests or go around doing political theater.
Hey, Graham. Graham, I just have a question. Did that Pace ICE raid happen?
It did not happen.
Yeah, it's a lie.
Okay. So I talked to the CEO of St. Paul's, because I happen to be on a committee with theirs. I talked to him directly. I asked him, are you having a raid at St. Paul's today? He said, there are reports. I said, can you tell me more? He said, well, a security guard encountered a person in the parking lot parked and said, can you tell me who you are? Can you move? We don't have any parking spots. This person impersonated an ICE officer. So I called the head of ICE here in San Diego. I said, did you have any of your staff in El Cajon for any reason today? He said, no, we did not. So, so either the CEO of St. Paul's and the head of ICE in San Diego are colluding to lie to the people, or it was an imposter, who, by the way, we got a recall, the police department answered a call for a suspicious person in the parking lot across the street at the church, 30 minutes after the security guard made contact with this person. That's the truth. Whether it's convenient or not, that's up, it is the truth. Truth's important.
Mr. Goble, we also, we had heard you related what happened with the CEO. We sent a police officer out who interviewed the security guard, and he relayed the exact same experience. So I think this ended up being a rumor that started on Facebook, and don't always believe what you read on the internet comes to play here.
Next person, please.
The next speaker is Connie Elder.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna, you know, you had your chance to speak, we're gonna let this lady speak, okay?
Hi, my name is Connie Elder. I am a retired dean from Quimaca College, and a retired professor from Grossmont College. And I'm also the person who organizes the bi-weekly now protests on Fletcher Parkway. We are gaining steam, we are gaining membership, it's crazy. And I didn't ever advertise, people are coming to me, they're hearing about me, and sending me emails and saying, I'm not happy, and I want to join. So I didn't think I was going to speech today, speak, and my writing is really horrible, but I'm going to try to understand what I wrote. I want to ask how we got here. This isn't the America I grew up in, it's not the America I believe in. People are being detained and deported for the color of their skin. They are arrested for going to school while brown, shopping while brown, worshiping while brown, walking down the street while brown. They are being arrested first, and checked for their status later. ICE searches deeply into the history of their lives, looking for minor traffic violations, anything that they can justify for retaining people. And they're doing that because they can't find 3,000 people in this country that are undocumented, serious criminals every day, because they aren't there. What keeps me awake at night is the cruelty, the absolute cruelty. Children, citizens, children who are citizens are afraid to go to school because they're afraid that they're going to be separated from their family. People are afraid to go to church and worship, they're afraid to shop, because the truth is, their immigration status is unreliable. Now with ICE gaining access to Medicaid, Medi-Cal data, people are going to be afraid to go to hospitals. The reality is that undocumented individuals do not have access to Medicaid unless they go to a hospital. They are eligible to receive emergency medical treatment. So now people are going to be afraid to go to ERs, people are going to die. People that we have lived next to, people that we have shopped with, people that we have worked with, people that we have hired, are going to die. Because of ICE's access to-
I'm sorry, your time is up.
What?
Your time's up, if you could finish, I appreciate it.
Oh, I have one, just one more sentence.
Sure, go ahead.
The city of El Cajon must, and its citizens, look deeply into their soul and stop working with ICE.
Ma'am? 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 I probably shouldn't engage you in this, ma'am, but were you protesting Barack Obama when he deported 3.1 million? I don't think, I don't think he had protests then.
Myrenei Brenham? The next speaker is Myrenei.
Ready for the next one?
The next speaker is Myrenei Brenham.
Go ahead and call the next one.
The next speaker is Sergio Conti.
We waiting for someone next? Oh, okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, guys, I expect I never see you again, but I'm here back. I have a question for you, Phil, microphone's working. Your grandparents came to, from Mexico to USA, how they came, legally or illegally? Really, can you explain me how they did? Can you, can you explain me how they came to USA? This is just, I have a master in public health, I like research, I'm researching your history, and I can't find a lot of information about how your grandparents came to this country. Can you explain me a little bit? It's easy to, to, it's easy to gain. I came in a tourist visa, as a doctor, you know, I get my legal paper here, and I came citizen, I can say it. But you can't say how your grandfathers came to this country? You can't? Why? People need to know. Because I believe your parents came, your grandparents came illegally to this country, like most of the Mexicans.
Sir, we've got to keep some decorum, so if you want to have, say something to the-
You bring, you bring to El Cajon, before January 20, we didn't have any problem in El Cajon. I like to go to my friends' Arab restaurant, have a beautiful dinner with them, you know? I, my friends, Afghanistan, we are in the Renet Park, we didn't have any problem. All the Mexicano have a carne asada, and we didn't know what is happening right now. You know what's happening right now? The people are scared to go outside the house, because, because you, because you brought, because your friend, Tom Hoffman, and Donald Trump brought all the hate to this city, what 30%, 30,000 people are Spanish-speaking. 30% are Middle Eastern speaker, speaker, Arab speaker, sorry. 7% African-American, and you are the minority. And I don't know why you are running this city. And the reason you are running this city, we didn't have power before, and now we're going to get power, when we recall Phil Ortiz, and we will recall Steve Goble, and we will recall you. Because you don't deserve to run this city, because this city, there's a lot of people who love other neighborhoods, and you make everybody be hating and be careful of the other guy. You bring ICE here, you bring ICE to our facilities, you bring, the people are scared, because if they have a medical, emergency medical, they don't have a document, you know, ICE is coming at night time, they will go to the homes, they will break the door, and I will take you back to Tijuana, when they will die. And it's thank you to you. 200,000 people are already arrested since you start all this war, not you in El Cajon, but all your people in USA. We don't need this war, you know? A guy named Jaime Alanis was killed by the police in Oxen, and it's thank you to you, your hands are full of blood.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a letter for you, blaming you for what happened to the people who are-
You want to give it to the clerk, she'll give it to me.
Fabiola Conti.
Hi, I'm sorry, I didn't know that I was about to check here, somebody write my name, but that's okay. You guys probably remember me, I'm a hospice nurse, I work with patients, so what you say about San Paul, I was there, unfortunately for you guys, and I was there, and I saw the people that were trying to enter in that building. But I know that you guys will deny it, so I don't want to say anything anymore about San Paul's. But I know my patients, and I take care of all my patients. Second, do you know what happened about Neighborhood Clinic? Do you know what happened about Neighborhood Clinic? Do you know what happened there?
What clinic you talking about?
Neighborhood Clinic. In the Madison. They went into the building, and they detained a patient there. This is happening all over, and I am so mad as a nurse. Because these patients, these, are the more vulnerable of our community. And we can't permit that. You, mayor, are responsible of this community. You have to protect us. You were hired to protect us. So we, if something happened here, you guys are responsible.
I just have a quick question for you. Ma'am, come back, I just have a quick question for you. I say this respectfully. But if the federal government wants to arrest a criminal, how, how am I, how is this council supposed to stop the federal government from arresting somebody they want to arrest?
Mr. Billwells, they are not arresting criminals. They are arresting hard workers, they are arresting patients, they are arresting pregnant women, they, wait, they are arresting all people. There is, there is, in Philadelphia, there is an 81-years-old person that was arrested, he was a resident, and he sent to, he was sent to Guatemala, 81-years-old. They are not arresting criminals, they are-
Look, I didn't want to start a speech, I just want-
Let me finish, let me finish.
I'm not, I'm not going to let you grant, I just want to answer the question. How, how is the-
No, let me finish, let me finish.
No, how is the city of El Cajon supposed to stop the federal government from arresting somebody they have a warrant for? It's, it's, it's just not, it's not realistic, so.
Something, the last thing that I'm going to say, I'm a nurse, but I'm going to be on the street, patrolling every day to take care of my community, because you can't.
Okay.
The last speaker is Myrenei Brenham.
Hey, guys. I was going to speak today, right, but I was encouraged, because I have been walking out in the streets, and I have been knocking on a lot of doors, and I have been talking to a lot of people. And I have never, in my life, had to console somebody. I'm talking ugly tears, have you seen somebody ugly cry before? Anyway, I had to help somebody, to comfort her, to tell her, everything's going to be okay, but I don't know that I really believe that everything's going to be okay. When I came to her door and I told her why I was there, that I live in El Cajon, I'm a community member, and I'm a volunteer, and I'm here to help immigrants in our community, she cried. It was like a desperate cry. They didn't know how to help her. And all I could tell her was, well, look, we're trying to recall the members of the city here in El Cajon who invited these issues here. That was hard. Another family that I talked to, these are US citizens, by the way, okay? I'm not knocking on doors of people who are just residents or whatever, they're on my list as registered voters. And this man looked at me with so much fear in his eyes, and he said, but who's going to see that list? Are they going to come take me away from my family? Are they going to arrest me? And I said, look, sir, I can't guarantee you anything, but if anything ever happens, they'll have to come get me first. And I just want to remind everybody here that California used to be a red state in the 80s and in the 90s. And then in 1994, they introduced the Resolution 187. And this is just like a repeat of that. All, everything, that Proposition 187, it was just a repeat of what's happening now. You know what happened after that? A lot of people came together, organized, people became citizens, people wanted to go out and vote, people wanted to stand up for their immigrant communities. And it turned the whole state blue after that. That's what was the triggering point, that was the tipping point, Proposition 187. I don't know what you guys were thinking here, I really don't. And I didn't want to get involved in politics, I had a very cushy, happy life before this. But it just seems like El Cajon has to do the same, like California did.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. I just want to address a couple of the comments directed towards me, because it seems like a lot of them are towards me. And I've said this before, with regard to the resolution, this was strictly about public safety, and only public safety. And I know Chris has said it, can I, can I, can I please just finish? I'm going to explain myself. I appreciate you guys, your guys' concern, but just, this is only about public safety. In the narrow scope of SB 54, and me wanting to speak out against it, because I agree, Chris got it right, I don't know where he was, but I don't agree with all the aspects of SB 54. Where there are crimes that aren't included, that I don't think people should be part of our community, like DUI, like drug crimes, like battery, like theft, these things, when these things occur, I don't believe that they should be a part of our community. And, and-
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, let's, let's let him have his time.
We can disagree on that, that's fine, but, but I don't believe, I, I think it's, I think it's wrong. And, and most times-
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to leave if you can't stop interrupting.
Please, I didn't speak or interrupt anybody, Mr. Conti asked me a question, I responded, I want to respect his time, I'm trying to be civil here. That, that's the intention, we can disagree with policy, but I don't affect, I don't affect state policy. And I'll say right now, I don't care that the cameras are on me, I don't agree with the, the manner to which ICE is conducting their operations. I think they should be going after criminals first. I 100% disagree with that, I have no problem saying that publicly. And the resolution that we had was specifically talking about crimes. And, and, and I'm talking about serious crimes, the ones that I talked about. DUI is a very serious crime in my eyes, arson is a very serious crime in my eyes, and all of these aren't included in SB 54, okay? And I want to, I want to also, if El Cajon was working with ICE, like everyone's saying they are, do you think the Africans at Home Depot would still be out there every single day? Do you, if, if, if El Cajon was working with ICE, do you think the fruit, do you think the fruit stands would still be out there every single day? Those, those are very low-level targets of people, and we're, and our, our code enforcement isn't even going after them. Though, though, if, if, if you're saying that people are going after you for their skin colors, which is what, which is, which is what, what the accusation is, those are very easy targets to go after, and they're still out there every single day. This, we're, we're not going, we're not working with ICE. I know, what I'm saying is, we're not working with ICE. Everyone's saying we're working with ICE, but there's an easy proof. The last, the last, the last thing I'll say, this is, like I said, I have nothing to hide, I really don't. And I have told Carlos, the veteran that comes here and speaks, if anybody genuinely has concerns about how the police, what our standard operating procedure is, for the city of El Cajon Police, working with immigration, I have, I invite you to come have a meeting, we can sit down with our city manager and our chief of police. You can get it, get it straight from the horse's mouth. And if you see something happening different on the street, name and badge number, get it to me, and we will, and we will, and we will correct it. I'm talking about, but I'm talking about El Cajon Police, not ICE, I don't control federal policy, neither do we. No, we didn't. And I just, I just told you that we didn't, and it's not happening.
And the reason you know that didn't, that didn't happen, do you think Rob Bonta would, would not sue us if we were, if we were violating his SB 54?
So, so the last thing I'll say is, everyone's saying that I'm anti-immigrant, and I'm going to draw a clear line that I'm, I'm 100% not. I sat up here and I voted to grant a Middle Eastern organization, they were going to lose their building from San Ysidro Health. San Ysidro Health was going to sell their building out from underneath them. This was October of last year, no, summer of last year. This group went to Sarah Jacob, Daralisa, all these, our state representatives, and no one could help them. They came to me and I said, we're going to figure it out. They came to me and I said, we're going to figure it out. This is in the city center. Most of these people don't have cars, they walk everywhere, it has to stay. I just answered an email about this and they didn't believe me. Bill couldn't vote because he was recused. And I sat up here and fought tooth and nail to divert funds so we could buy the building from Sandy Seager Health and then we gave this group a dollar a year lease, basically free, so they can continue social services for newcomers. That, that is, and they're still there doing it. You can go there, it's on Lexington and Avocado. You can go there every single day and there's a line out the door. And I fought tooth and nail. And Michelle, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you voted against that and they're not going to recall her. She voted no on that, to give them the building. And I, and I had to fight tooth and nail to gather. You can go back and look at the record. The other group is, the other group we gave $150,000 grant to for social services as well. So you can, the, the vote, the vote, it was a, it was a Middle Eastern group that, that supports every single, every single background. So, so anyways, all I have to say, I, this is, I have nothing to hide. This is who I am, if you want to speak to me, you can. But I, I'm proud, I, I helped two people get their green cards in the past two years, writing letters of recommendation. So you guys can disagree with me all you want with regard to how things are done and national policy and things like that, but I don't control that. But this, this, but this, but all of this, all of, all of this is being blown up into things that are outside of my control and outside of the city's control. So that's all I'll say.
Okay. Gary?
Morgan, if I say too much, stop me, okay? I want to stay out of jail. So this is kind of what I predicted would happen if we passed this. And I voted against it, Michelle voted against it. And this, and, and my understanding is the police is not working with ICE. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct.
So why do we even need this resolution? We could just rescind it and I think everybody would be happy. So, you know, it has done nothing except create a lot of fear. I mean, I hear it all the time. You know, I was at, I own a duplex just outside the city limits and I was doing some work when a plumbing line broke and a Hispanic family came out and talked to me about this very issue. And they're really scared. And there's no reason for this fear because we don't need to do this. Out of 482 cities, only two have done it. Huntington Beach and El Cajon. We're the outliers. Okay, I see the, the city attorney's starting to wince at me, so I better not say anymore. I do have a question for you. For, for rescinding this, will we have to have one of the people that voted for it to put it on the agenda again?
Well, you're thinking of reconsideration. I think the fact is, if you wanted to repeal it, you would have to go through the normal process to place it on the agenda. Two council members should request it on the agenda and you can vote whether you would repeal it. My suggestion is you have somebody from the, that approved it, has changed their mind, but that, that reason is because we can't be coming back every meeting repealing and adopting, or trying to repeal again and again and again. So if it's not a reconsideration after this point in time, you could do it with two council members, but I would suggest that if it fails again and the resolution remains effective, you're not going to get a reconsideration unless one of the persons who voted to keep the resolution is joined in that request.
Yeah, I mean, what's happening right now actually has no effect on the police except it's making all these people very, very fearful. And I don't like our citizens being fearful. So that's, thinking I'd be interested in. I guess I have to call one of the three, I can't call two, right, Morgan? Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Maybe we've not heard the end of this, so we'll continue the talk. But we have any more speakers?
There are no more speaker cards, sir.
Okay. We have no written communications on today's agenda. We have one public hearing on today's agenda. Item seven is for a proposed tenant-based rental assistance program and other fiscal actions. Staff will tell us about this.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. The purpose of this public hearing is to seek public input and the city council's decision on the substantial amendment to the current 24-28 consolidated plan and the annual action plan for fiscal year 25-26, plus some other fiscal actions. As you know, the five-year consolidated plan is the city's plan for addressing the needs of El Cajon's low-income community over a five-year period. This is using both CDBG and home funds. An annual action plan is also required for each year of that comp plan. The comp plan was adopted in May of 2024 and the action plan was recently adopted on May 27, 2025. In accordance with HUD regulations and the city's citizen participation plan, adding a new priority or program, or the implementation of a new program not previously addressed in both those plans requires the city to prepare a substantial amendment that includes a public hearing. Staff recommends adding a tenant-based rental assistance program, also known as TIBRA program, as a priority in both the consolidated plan and the action plan. This would be with the use of available home investment partnerships act funds or also home funds. The home allocation would be a total of $300,000 and it would include an initial one-year of rental assistance and it may also include security deposit assistance, but no rental arrears in this program is allowed. This amount of $300,000 would assist approximately 10 eligible households and they would have to earn less than the 50% of San Diego County area median income. Funds would also be earmarked for homeless individuals and families. Funds would be allocated or reallocated from available home housing pool of funds. Historically, the home funds have been used for funding other programs such as the First Time Home Buyer Housing Rehab Loan Program, rental housing development or for sale units, such as the ones developed by San Diego Habitat for Humanity. Due to the amount of home funds available at the moment and also the increase in the demand for supportive housing options that also assist in placement of program participants into permanent housing, staff is recommending the creation of this new tenant-based rental assistance program that can help augment the currently PLHA-funded rental assistance program, which we'll, we'll also be discussing later on today. As mentioned, there are other fiscal actions being presented. So for the fiscal year 25-26 city budget, an amendment is requested in order to add the already-approved CDBG-funded capital improvement project. This is for the Neighborhood Streetlights 2025. This will allocate appropriate and expand a total of $731,919 in CDBG funds to be included in the 25-26 city budget and the engineering department budget. The last item for the, for the fiscal actions will be the fiscal year 21-22 minor amendment. Staff is requesting an increase in the home American Rescue Plan funding by $3,246. This is a minimal correction received by HUD for the home ARP allocation. This will just allow the authority to allocate appropriate and expand that amount for the eligible activities under the already-approved plan. Both actions in this slide will authorize CDBG and home funds to be applied to the respective amounts. To end the presentation, staff recommends a few things. So staff recommends opening the public hearing and accepting public testimony for the adoption of the substantial amendment, closing the public hearing and accepting staff recommendations to authorize de-allocation appropriation and to expand the $300,000 in home funds for the tenant-based rental assistance program, to authorize to allocate appropriate and expand $731,919 for the CIP Neighborhood Streetlights Project, approve the minor amendment to the 21-22 annual action plan for the home ARP funding correction, and authorize the city manager or destiny to submit the substantial amendment to HUD and city council to adopt the resolution. Housing staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Let me see if we have questions.
Thank you.
You want to start, Steve?
Sure. Let's go back to the slide titled FY 25-26 budget. That one. On that item, that's not new spending, that is just merely a reclassification from this fund to this fund. From CDBG to capital improvement.
This is still a CDBG capital improvement project that was already approved in May of 2025. It's just adding it to the city's engineering department budget.
Okay, so it's not.
But it's not a new program.
It's not new, okay, it's just moving from here to here.
Correct.
Okay. And then let's go back a couple slides. Yeah, let's, let's go there. So this $300,000, my understanding was this is money that was in the home fund, which could have been used for the MTS Transit Center project, which is no longer happening. It could have been used for first-time home buyers, but we're not seeing the demand for that money. So we're making it available on, for people who need rental assistance. Am I, so far, so good?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the rental assistance, it's kind of scary to hear tenant-based rental assistance because we should be clear, this is not going to people who are currently in permanent housing to help them with their rent. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's for people either in bridge housing, which could be the ECTLC shelter, the Meridian cabins, who, they're in a temporary situation and this money would help them get into a permanent situation. Is that correct?
That is the goal, correct.
That's the goal, okay. And it's not limited to 10 people, but you think that might be the amount available? If I have, if 10 people don't use all the money, then it certainly could be available to more people, correct?
Yes, it could be more than 10 people depending on the household size.
Okay, sounds good. So there's not a limit?
No.
On those. For those reasons, I think my questions are answered. Thank you. Michelle, go ahead.
Sorry, Jen, I voted Epstein. Okay, I have a couple of questions. Who's going to run the program, the tenant-based?
That will be in-house, so city staff.
Okay. In-house staff, okay. And how long is it going to be available?
So it's up to one year of rental assistance initially, but it is a pilot program, so we would have to see how, how it goes.
And if someone is coming from transitional housing or bridge housing and they partake of this particular program, will there be case management to help make sure that when their year is up, they have the job, the support, the financial literacy to be able to move forward and continue paying that rent?
Yeah, so that is part of the program itself. So we want to make sure that they're self-sustaining after that one-year assistance is over.
So there is some case management?
That will be involved, correct.
And who runs the case management?
That would be the service provider that is providing the case management to the client throughout that process.
Okay.
Whether it's the service provider or, you know, who runs the program.
Got it. All right. And do we have the inventory in El Cajon to be able to accommodate, you know, getting people into low-income housing? I hear all the time that, you know, rent is really high in El Cajon, you know, for one-bedrooms, studios or, or a bedroom to even rent is running 1,500 to close to 2,000 sometimes. Do we have the inventory in El Cajon to be able to accommodate setting up this program and getting at least 10 households in there?
I don't know the current inventory of available rental units. However, we do see the demand being there.
Okay.
And that is the, usually what is needed for families to be able to succeed and move on into permanent housing, which is rental assistance.
Right. And, and don't get me wrong, I thoroughly agree that there is a need out there. And, you know, I hear all the time of seniors who are struggling to make their rent and struggling to find housing, but they're not in bridge housing or transitional housing. They're already in their place, but it's tenuous because of the rise in rent and their social security or whatever is not being able to meet that.
Ms. Benjel?
Yeah.
Also to respond to that question, we recently met with a service provider and asked about that very question. Is, is the challenge finding the individuals? Is the challenge finding the housing? And right now, they said the housing is actually there right now.
Okay.
And for only 10, that would be, probably the market would be able to sustain that. If there were hundreds, that would be a different story.
Right.
But I think there's enough in the market to sustain that, although housing is expensive.
Right. Okay, well, that's good. It would be great if in our efforts to do this and to help the residents here, in our, in our work to put together a list that is based or, you know, that is posted on our website. You know, these places have places to rent. I don't know if we can do that, but, you know, if you run across an apartment complex that has a bunch of one-bedrooms and they're really kind of below, you know, what would be considered like market rate, below 18, $2,000 a month. Is there any way that we can get a list of that and kind of update it?
That, that would be a hard, because it's changing. I mean, housing are changing every day. We would, we would literally have to have at least one, two, three staff just to be looking at the market all the time. I mean, with Google, I think the average person can find housing.
I mean, you'd be surprised, but yeah, no, I agree and it was just a thought. And then on the light, we have a list of areas that we're going to be installing the lights at? Do we have a map, a proposed?
We do have a list of locations, a potential area. I don't have the information at the moment, but we can send that out to, to city council.
Just that, that comes up and if someone were to ask me, hey, I need streetlights, I can look at the list and go, well, I see here that maybe in, you know, December or January, we're going to be hitting your area. It would just kind of give us more information when the public contacts us about that. So that would be great if you have that. Don't, don't, don't go out of your way to do it, but if you got it easy, send it to me. I think that's it on this one. Thank you.
Steve?
A follow-up question. The $300,000, we certainly don't want it to be a magnet for people. We know that our shelters currently accept people from other cities brought into our city. So is there a requirement that they have to be a resident of one of our shelters for a certain period of time before they're eligible for this money?
Yes, that is another of the goals for this program. So you gave a good example to use it with ECTLC or the emergency cabins, where they already have people that they're working with to match to permanent housing.
What I didn't hear is there's a length of time they must be in those facilities to be eligible for up to $30,000 in assistance.
Usually it's about 90 days. And again, that's because they need to have case management and make sure that they will be sustainable when they reach permanent housing, but usually a 90-day or 60-day stay.
Okay, I'm going to look to the city manager and just say, that's kind of important, I think, to the taxpayers of El Cajon, that there is some hard metric that.
We would have to explore, I don't know if, I don't know if federal guidelines allow us to discriminate on those, that's the wrong word, but to allocate money to certain groups of people. I think we're only working with people that are providing case management in El Cajon right now. So we know that they have at least a 90-day relationship with our caseworkers. We can look into the, into the residency requirement or they have to have been in the city for a certain. a certain amount of time, and bring that back for a criteria for the council to consider.
I think that would be helpful to not make this a magnet for other places to say, "Hey, let's go to El Cajon. We can get $30,000 of rental assistance. All we got to do is walk into the shelter and say, 'Hey, I'm ready. Can you help me?'" When really, this money, we would hope, would be for some people that are trying to get help here in El Cajon. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thanks very much. I appreciate you coming. I'd like to open up the public hearing and ask Jen if we have any speaker cards.
There are no speaker cards, sir.
Make a motion then to close the public hearing.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
We have three administrative reports on today's agenda. Item eight is a homeless-
Point of order, I think we have to vote on this.
Mayor, we have a whole lot of things that can be taken in one adoption of a resolution, but-
I'm sorry.
Unless you want to take each one up and discuss each item, the resolution should cover all of it.
Yeah. Would somebody like to adopt that resolution?
I'll make a motion if we adopt the staff recommendation covering all the eight points.
Second.
All right. Move the second up, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, we need to take a quick break, and then we'll come back and continue. The report, staff will tell us about this.
That would be me again.
You're back.
I am back. With this presentation today, it will be the Homeless Programs and Services Report, and that's for a period of January 1st to June 30th, 2025. I will present the general homeless update, and then we'll pass it over to our city manager for his part of the presentation as well. The goal for today, again, is to provide the six-month update on how the city continues to address homelessness with different programs and services. The city during this period had 13 active programs, six of which were implemented by service providers and two by city departments. This was using a total of four funding sources. That would be community development block grant, which comes from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Fund, which also is known as SB2, coming from the $75 fee on certain real estate transactions, the Low-Moderate Housing Income Asset Fund, which are the remaining funds from the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, and lastly, the general fund. Service providers play a big role in the implementation of these programs and services. I will go ahead and list them out in alphabetical order. First off, we have Crisis House. They currently manage the emergency sleeping cabins at Meridian Baptist Church. They provide transitional/bridge housing with essential services to individuals and families in El Cajon. For the upcoming fiscal year, they will receive about 20,000 in PLHA funds to provide those residents with assistance towards secured deposits for easier access to permanent housing. They also provide homeless outreach, and that is through a CDBG grant received back in 2021 of about 700,000. This was to acquire a new site to continue serving the community of El Cajon. They will continue with outreach efforts for at least another six years, and their main focus continues to be homeless individuals as well as victims of domestic violence. We also have East County Transitional Living Center, that also has active programs, and they use PLHA and CDBG funds. These are for non-faith-based emergency shelter and housing navigation and outreach. Included in that is also essential and repertory services. In addition, they also have their faith-based programs, such as a family restoration one-year program and a program for single males and single females. Homestart has four active programs, and they receive PLHA and CDBG funding. The homeless outreach program is street-based outreach in coordination with the city's police department, the homeless outreach team, or HOT team. They go out once a week on Fridays to provide resources, such as the emergency housing placement program, and that is also another of their active programs, and they assist with emergency housing. Case management services are provided to clients who are in contact during outreach events or through other intake processes, and they are provided repertory services for self-sufficiency, mental health, and other services as well. Rapid Rehousing Rental Assistance Program, they provide rental assistance for a minimum of six months, or one-time rental assistance or rapid rehousing to homeless individuals and families earning less than 30% of the area median income. The purpose is housing stability and to move into permanent housing. Interfaith Shelter Network implements a rotational emergency shelter, usually during the months from January to March of every year, using CDBG funds. That includes shelter, meals, and support. The goal is to move into permanent housing as well. The Salvation Army continues to implement the reunification program, or the A Way Back Home program. This is for individuals interested in reuniting with their families. This includes transportation and food, and as well as case management at three and six months of the reunification. East County Homeless Task Force, they do receive some general fund in order to continue playing a role in informing and engaging community members, as well as advocating for homeless persons. The two city departments implementing services are the police department and Public Works. As mentioned, the police department has the HOT team, so they continue to partner with homeless service providers on a weekly basis to support outreach and engagement efforts. And this is to help build rapport, offer services, and connect them with available resources. The outreach team usually consists of six officers, and it typically lasts about three hours. This is funded through the general fund. And lastly, the Quality of Life team ensures that the city's parks, right-of-way's, and drainage channels are clear of debris and trash. This team is also supported by a contract with Arpen Corpse. Additionally, from programs and services provided, there are homeless outreach events that are held throughout the year, throughout different months. Some of us may be familiar with the Project Homeless Connect. However, there are other events that match individuals with services as well. Moving on to accomplishments, a total for the last six-month period of 1,9,720 was allocated for the programs and services, and a total of 950,992 was spent. This resulted in 2,447 persons served. Now, a person served would mean a person that receives some type of service or assistance from the programs mentioned. This can be contact through outreach, rental assistance, or someone placed in an emergency shelter. The same person is able to receive assistance from different types of programs, however, not the same service twice. These numbers are unduplicated per program. Out of those totals served, 180 went into permanent housing, 146 into transitional/bridge housing, and 506 into emergency shelter. The example of transitional/bridge housing is considered the emergency cabins, where they would stay for a short period of time while they are connected into permanent housing. For quality of life, they completed 67 cleanups that included 41 city streets and 21 city storm channels, and they were able to gather 443 tons of debris, 160 from city streets and 283 from city storm channels. All the information provided is also available for viewing as attachment one of the staff report. And in order to ensure that accomplishments are being recorded correctly, city staff does complete desk monitoring throughout the year, especially to verify persons served are from El Cajon and to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal funding requirements. Monitoring for these services will take place during fiscal year 2526. This concludes my part of the presentation, so I will pass it over to the city manager.
Thank you. So, the timing of this, the six-month report aligned really well with me getting some information back to the city council based on your last city council action plan discussion back in May. So, I'm here to report on three of those items. Next slide. We're going to talk about the idea of a city-managed homeless count to occur four times a year, talk about a storage program for encampment cleanups, and then lastly, the council said, if we were to allocate half a million, $1 million, or $2 million in one-time general fund money, how would we use it? I have a response for the city council on that. So, let's go to the first topic, which is the city-managed homeless count. So, there's a couple of things that would have to occur. One, we'd have to develop an app, a phone app, that has actually already been developed by staff, has developed a pilot app for that, based on an existing platform that the county uses. We would recommend using staff volunteers initially. We would not go out and look for other volunteers from organizations. We would use staff for these. And we would develop a map to identify routes of which to go. And they would not be like the regional, or the point-in-time count, which just have big census tracts. They would actually be using real data that we've collected over the year to know where the people are. So, if we, we've already developed that map, so I'll show you a preview of that. So, this map shows where we have done cleanups, and based on that cleanup map, we've identified different routes where different teams would go and hit throughout the city. We would also have one team that would just go everywhere in these areas that are not included to pick up any other individuals that aren't in the usual spots. We'll go to the next slide. The other thing is that we would need to develop the questions that we would be asking through the app. Some of those questions are identified in the staff report, probably more questions than we have available time to ask, so we might do some random sampling of the questions, have some basic demographic information that we would ask everybody, and then we'd random sample some of the other types of questions to get a good sense of what's going on in the streets. We believe that the cost to run this program would be pretty nominal, because we'd be using a free app, existing city staff, and we would just flex people's time, that those that came in at 5:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning, we would let them leave a little bit earlier that day. So, there would be a cost in productivity, but if we have enough people engaged, it should spread out that cost, or at least the staff impact. And then, in terms of timing, again, we would recommend doing this four times a year as a pilot program for the first year, with the first one occurring in the fall. We'd like to do one around the time in which the traditional point-in-time count occurs to have a little bit of a gut check on that, and then we would schedule the rest for the other two quarters throughout the year. As part of this, as we were talking about, how do we gather information? And this is really about gathering information. This is not about negating or not participating in the annual federally required point-in-time count. This is about us getting better data that will help drive better policy ideas to the city council. As we were discussing this, we were approached by the San Diego Rescue Mission, and they made an offer to do a weekly mobile shower service, where they would come out for four hours once a week. We could identify where, what sites we want them at, so that would rotate around the city. They would start collecting data through these sites and create a by-list name, which would also be helpful to us as we're collecting data. They would offer individuals emergency shelter opportunities, so they would get them into one of their shelters that they manage somewhere in the county of San Diego. They currently operate three sites. And the beauty of this, there'd be no cost to the city. So, that's another option to collect some additional data. Staff also was asked to provide some analysis on a storage program. The staff report identifies, we continue to have some concerns with security, with contamination, with bedbugs and other rodents. We do think this would be pretty staff-intensive. We also questioned just, what are we trying to accomplish? Does this have an ROI? We do think that the first year would cost about $165,000, depending on the system that we ended up using. But again, if this is something the council wants to play around with, to pilot, staff's open to this, and we'll take your direction on this one. Lastly, the council asked, how would we spend some one-time money? To be honest with you, staff would not recommend allocating one-time money to a project outside of what we've just talked about in this staff report. I think there's some value in collecting real data about the folks that we're trying to serve. to serve based on those questions that we'll ask during the quarterly time counts on the areas that we're trying to understand better and know how to pinpoint those programs. So, at this time, staff doesn't think it's prudent to give a recommendation, but let's collect some data and then come back with a recommendation. So, with that, I'll turn the rest of my time back over to Yanni.
Thank you. So, as a, as a, as a result of the data provided today, staff recommends the following: to continue funding the homeless programs implemented by service providers and city departments contingent upon available funding. Continue seeking new funding opportunities when feasible. Continue financial support for the East County Homeless Task Force. Continue support for the emergency sleeping cabins. Continue providing the six-month update. Initiate a pilot program to conduct a city-operated homeless count twice over the next six months and allow the San Diego Rescue Mission to conduct a weekly shower event in the city. And with that, we end the presentation. Staff is available to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. Let me see if we have questions. I'm sure we do. Michelle?
I would like to, ECTLC, let's just get right into it. The emergency shelter is not 90 days, and I would like to get an amendment on any documentation that we have on that. It is not 90 days for individuals. I recently put a gentleman in there. After three days, he was asked to join their program. If they don't join their program, then they have to leave. And the problem I have with that is that ECTLC has been taking in homeless from other parts of the county, which is fine. I don't mind helping people, but if they don't comply with the program, then they get exited from the program. And now they're exited onto our streets. Because San Diego, the city of San Diego, who has brought that person in and placed him into ECTLC, is not going to come back out and take them back to San Diego. So, the gentleman that I did put in, he did make the decision to stay. He's a 65-year-old male, no drug problem or anything, but he decided to go ahead and go through their program because he had nothing else. And so, I think that the verbiage that we have, it has always been my understanding that we had a 28-day emergency shelter, but from what I understand now, that is only for families. Well, what about the males or the, single males or single females? They don't have the same opportunity. And if they don't want to go into their program, and there's a lot of reasons why, and they have allowed smoking and, you know, they are changing, but we have nothing else. If our emergency program is supposed to, you know, we're giving them XYZ amount of money, and I believe it was $100,000, if we're giving them $100,000, how many people are actually being served in that emergency shelter and actually getting help? Because if they don't want to do their religious program, if they don't want to do, if, say you're 65 years old and you don't have a drug or alcohol problem, why would you want to go through rehab? Now, I get that their Genesis program is to kind of help with that, but there are some issues that I have, and I think that the information that we have out there on ECTLC is not correct. And I don't see any representation from ECTLC here to address. You are here, great, thank you. I will ask questions of you. So that is my concern, is that people are going in there, and if they don't comply with the program, they're out on the street. And if we're not giving them 28 days, because, I mean, how do you make a life decision to join a program or not join a program in three days? That's a big decision to make. And so my question is, if we're not going to allow a 28-day, a set time, like 28 days, to get yourself off the street, get yourself fed, you know, nutritionally balanced again, and your priorities in being able to talk to someone, get off the street, how are you going to make that decision in three days or even a week? That's a big decision to make, to separate yourself for 90 days, no contact with anyone. And that's just on the emergency shelter. I have other opinions about the rest of the program, but as far as the emergency shelter and what we control, I think that we need to get better, better verbiage from ECTLC, exactly what their program is for the emergency shelter, exactly how long do they have, and what are we going to do about accepting those homeless folks from outside of Alcohone who are then exited out of the program and now they're just left on the street and we have nothing else? So that, that's what I have on that. And then, on the, the interface shelter, do we, is, that's rotating just in Alcohone or is that in East County?
They do use churches to do the rotating emergency shelter. Some locations are in Alcohone, some are not in Alcohone.
Okay. Thank you to the San Diego Rescue Mission for your offer. I appreciate that. As far as the storage goes, I agree that $165,000 right now, that we are, we are tightening up our belts, $165,000 for people that, to store their stuff. Yes, it helps them out, but what if they need something and they're having to come back and access it? I think that that is, we can proba, my opinion is, we can probably just cross that off our list, save the $165,000 plus, and move on. Is the person from EC, can I ask a question of ECTLC?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Come on up. Yeah, come on up. Tell us who you are and...
Yeah, my name's Evan. I'm the Men's Program Director for East County Transitional Living Center.
Thanks, Evan.
Yes, ma'am.
So can you please explain to me about the 90-day, or not 90 days, sorry. Let me go back. Can you please explain to me, the emergency shelter, exactly how long does anyone have to stay there? And what I have heard, are the rumors true, that within three to five days, you have to make that decision? And if you don't want to go into the programs or the 90-day programs, you must exit out? Are you helping them find an alternative to that? And is the 28-day length only for families?
So yeah, it would be a case-by-case basis. What we believe at ECTLC is what's called individualized care. Unfortunately, with the levels of challenges that so many individuals are facing, we do not have a one-size-fits-all solution. So what we do is we look at various different markers within someone's behavior, and a lot of this hinges on safety because we do have children on the premises. So, when we see individuals that are not, I would say, conforming to our community, then that raises, it raises concerns. And then, so at that point, that case manager would be notified, and we would try to make a push for them to join the program. I believe we are making great strides as far as eliminating a lot of the religious part of the program. We do believe in God, and we do believe that that is the foundation for change in someone's life. But we are working on alternate classes, alternate programming, I would say more inclusive I think also too, there's just not enough housing. We're under great amounts of pressure. I know that the family side has a waiting list of like 298 families. I know on the single men's side, I think that waiting list was somewhere around 80, 90 people. So when we're getting this much pressure, it's hard, it's just difficult to let people stay 28 days when there's other people that are needing help. Right now, we're working with various different agencies to try to see if we can get them placed in another program. But that's really the best that I can offer right now, council member.
So, an individual, a male or female individual comes in, they need 20, and they come into the emergency shelter, basically you're telling me they don't get 28 days, they only get, it's on a case-by-case basis, I understand that. But what is the average stay? Seven days?
Yeah, I would say the average stay is somewhere between five and seven days. I think really that, that emergency housing is for them to formulate a plan, and then what they do is they speak with the intake coordinator, they speak with the case manager as far as how they want to execute those plans. And these plans can be as far as, I want to start a business right now to getting a job. So we're trying to narrow it down. The problem is, is that we're trying to manufacture a great deal of change within 28 days a week, and in reality, it just takes time.
But, but it was my understanding that the emergency shelter was not for a program-based. It was simply to get someone off the street, get them into emergency shelter, get them off the street, and then help them decide, what are we going to do? But it's giving them time to regroup and get their energies back in together. If you can afford that, if we're paying for an emergency shelter, then, Mr. Mitchell, this is what I'm proposing, is that we need to make sure that the language is clear on this, because they are not getting 28-day service. And that was under my understanding, it has been my understanding for years. I've been involved with ECTLC for a few years now, and it has always been my understanding that if I get someone in there, they had 28 days to get their life turned around and decide, am I going to go into the program for 90 days or a year, sorry, a year? Or am I going to find someplace else? And I think that we need to, as a city, we need to make sure that, because that's not what we're doing. And so, in essence, we're basically funding a, let's say, an average of five-day emergency shelter, not a 28-day. Is that correct?
That's one way to look at it. The beds are always full. So it's, there are always people from the streets that are plugged up.
Right.
And so it's not like, it's not like you're not taking another person off the street versus, they're always full. And we're trying to get to as many people as possible, I think, working on the language, absolutely. And I can talk to my superior about that as well. But it's not our intention to not...
Okay. And one last question. When it comes to taking in those from outside of the city of Alcohone, and they're being exited from the program, what's happening? Are you contacting, who brought, the, the agency that brought them over and say, hey, they're being exited out, you need to come pick them up? Or are we just releasing them onto the street with, they're not familiar with Alcohone, they've come from God knows where, they've come from outside of Alcohone, now they're being exited to the street, they have no family, no friends out here? What is happening with them?
I think maybe your underst, your understanding of how people are coming into the program might need to shift a little bit. So, many, many times there aren't outside agencies that are bringing people in. If there is a contact person like Path or another one of our partners that we are working with, we absolutely stay in contact with their case manager and make sure they're transferred out. Unfortunately, changing your life is really hard. And so there are people that throw in the towel and they leave, and at that point, there's not a whole lot we can do. From our standpoint, as far as a safety aspect, if someone does not want to be there, we don't want to try to hold them because that could create a lot of other problems. I do love the idea though, as far as reaching out maybe to other communities or other programs. And if there are openings, we can absolutely facilitate that change. I think we just have a transitional living bed shortage. And so I think we're doing the best we can.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
One thing, Michelle, I just have a question for you. Are you under the impression that we're paying for 45 days and only getting sometimes three or four days?
Yes, I'm under the impression that we, we provide a service that, it has been under my impression that it was a 28-day emergency shelter.
So we're paying for 28 days and sometimes they discharge them?
Correct.
So, is that true, Mr.?
No, we pay per night. So, there are so many beds, if someone stays there, whether they stay there for two days or three days or 10 days, or if it's 10 people staying over the course of 30 days, we just pay for the bed. Does that make sense?
So are you proposing then that we get in the middle of their program and tell them how to run their program?
No. What I'm proposing is that, on our documentation that we have and everything that I have seen about ECTLC and our emergency shelter, is that it is a 28-day program, or a 28-day stay. But that is only for families, is what I've been told. It's only for families, and that singles do not have that option. And I'm just saying that if, if, if that's the way they run their program, then that's fine. I'm not going to regulate it, that's their business. But if we as a city are providing funds for an emergency shelter and this description, then we need to change the description is all. If we're not, you know, because it does give a false...
So that says it's not guaranteed that it's 45 days?
Right. You're not guaranteed. I mean, because I have told people, you've got 28 days to be able to, you know, get your life together and get settled in, and come to find out, no. In three to five days, they're, they're out. They don't want to go into this faith-based program, and that's what I have a problem with.
And the truth is, in the recovery world, that's pretty common, more, more common than not, that people bail out after a couple of days. It's, it's pretty much the norm. But Gary, you had a question?
I just want to clarify, as far as our contract, it's up to 28 days. So if somebody is in there for three days, and they're given this, the first few days, you know, they're barely coming into the shelter, but there's going to be rules. As a shelter provider, they're going to go through those rules. And a lot of times, what I've been hearing is, after three days, they leave because they don't want to comply with the rules that come with the program. It's not necessarily that they don't want to go to the religious program. But we can look into that. I can meet with Dr. Julie and go over that, those contractual requirements that they have to, for those that are eligible for the city's program, it's up to 28 days.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Dorado. My, my concern is that it is, it says one thing, and it's been under the impression that they had 28 days. I'm not happy with their program, but that's just my own personal, like I said, I recently got a man in there, 65, no drug problem, Jehovah Witness, he's religious and everything. He had nothing. So he ended up going into the program because he has nothing else going on for him, no family, no friends. So what else is he going to do? He's going to be on the street? No. So he's joining that program because he has nothing.
And we'll also share a copy of the complaint form as part of one of the requirements of the HUD audit. There was a complaint form that needed to be instituted, so if somebody's not happy with the services they're receiving, or if they're being pushed into the religious component, there is a form that can be handed, that's handed to the individual if they request it regarding their right to complain to the city. And we'll follow up on those complaints.
Okay, thank you.
And what makes sense for us is, all of our literature will say up to 28 days, so it doesn't provide that false advertising that it is a 28-day program. I'm not sure, we'll make sure it does say it wherever we have it, we'll make sure it says that.
Sure, Steve.
I'll save my comments for later. This is a question. How do you know billing-wise, when their five days are up, which are billed to the non-sectarian portion of the budget? And then, if they're still staying there after five days, it could be six, could be 10, whatever, how do you, how do you know when the billing stops for the nonreligious and they assume and cannot bill us for ongoing?
I'll let staff answer. They deal with the billing on a regular basis, and maybe ECTLC can weigh in on that too.
Yeah, so we run two separate programs when it comes to the emergency housing and the one-year program. So when they transfer out of emergency housing and they go into the one-year, we cut that time off. And David Fieldster would be the guy that I could put you guys into contact with if that was needed.
Okay. As long as we're monitoring, auditing, doing that, that's how we care. Second question. The Regional Task Force on the Homeless, I believe, is helping us with a grant similar to the same grant that they did for Lemon Grove, is that correct?
No.
No.
They've encouraged us to apply for that grant, and they said they would be supportive of us in us applying for that grant.
Okay. Thank you. Gary?
Well, I've...
Well, I've had you, up to three graduates from ECTLC live at my house from January of 2016 on. And I know that usually their credit shot, so they come live with me for a while at my house, and then get their lives together. And out of the, I don't know, 25 or so, I had come through, I had only had one guy fall off the wagon. So I know maybe I get the best of the best, but the program is effective, in my opinion. And I had an experience about a year ago that a guy that worked for me over seven years ago, but he worked for me about four years, college degree, really smart, I get this call from him when he's drunk out of his mind, said, I want to, I want to get into that program you told me about six years ago. And so I went and picked him up, took him to ECTLC, and he was drunk when he got there. And they said, okay, here, here are the rules while you're right here before we transfer you to the ranch where they kind of dry them out, I guess. And got, and then he said, you can't go over to the women's side. Well, he kept on going over to the women's side, and he couldn't accept that. And he lasted maybe three hours. And, you know, so there, there's a lot of people there that have, I mean, serious problems and don't really want to make what they see as a sacrifice to, to get sober, to get with some sort of the program. And then also, as far as that complaint form goes, a lot of people don't like the rules and they're mad because they get kicked out because they don't like the rules and they write up a complaint. But the rules, you know, they are strict. It's kind of a, like a boot camp. But that's what they need to get their lives on track, you know? And they need a very disciplined and structured life. And that's what ECTLC offers. And, and there is a religious aspect to it later on, and my opinion is that's very effective. And maybe that's not the right place for them to be. And, you know, maybe they can refer to another non-religious program. So I've hired, gosh, probably 50 people from ECTLC to do work for me over the last 20 or so years. And I had three guys who, you know, didn't work out. And usually it's their, their, their brain is fried, they just can't understand what I asked them to do. But other than that, I've had very great experience with them.
Thank you. Phil?
I guess we'll just, I'll skip over to the feedback from, regarding the feasibility of conducting a city-managed homeless count. We have the app, you have the, you have the locations identified of where we go in the And your, the strategy right now is staff, current city staff is going to go out and gather information, but you're saying to enhance the accuracy utilizing San Diego Rescue Mission's shower to bring people to get counted? Is that, is that kind of the strategy or?
No, I, I think our goal is we'll collect data through the, through our method, including collecting names. If they're collecting a by-name list as well, we can use that and do some cross-referencing.
Okay, okay. So we're not going to rely on San Diego County Rescue Mission for the data?
Correct. It's just another way to get information about our homeless community.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. I like the idea of a city-managed homeless count that doesn't go through census tracts. And we, we know what's happening in our backyard better than anybody else. And, you know, everybody driving through the city knows where the homeless encampments pop up, and it's cyclical, you know, they're gone and then they come back. So just by that nature. And you said four times a year? Is that, is that realistic to be able to accomplish that with staff and everything?
I think so initially, and then we will assess after the pilot year and say, maybe three times a year, maybe twice a year.
And that's the whole city, four times a year?
We would look at the entire city four times.
Four times a year, okay.
Yeah.
All right. With regard to the storage system, personal belongings, reading through the staff report, the inherent issues that arise with disputes and of ownership, and you lost this, and I had that, and contamination, and the, the high cost, you know, we're in budget cuts. It doesn't seem like it's going to add much value to our current operation. So I tend to agree with staff. I'm not going to, I'm not going to fight staff on that one at all. And I'd still be an advocate for, you know, the, the additional funding towards homelessness, that one-time blitz that we talked about. I'm 100% behind that still. And to continue to agree with the rest of the staff, our, I, I like our homeless partners. I think they do a good job. You know, ECTLC, Home Start, all these people, they're not just collecting a paycheck. You know, I can tell when I talk to them that they really do care. I mean, Michelle and I have jumped in to help people just around here, and we call their cell phones, and it's not like, please hold. It's, hey, let me help you. And so I, whatever you guys are doing to get people, Home Start, Crisis House, all these people, you guys really have a heart for it. And I think, you know, this council recognizes that because we have a heart for it, too. Michelle was homeless, I was homeless, like Gary lets people from ECTLC sleep in his own home, in his rooms, you know, and help them out. Bill's been working with mental health, in the mental health industry with homeless people his entire career. Steve builds cabins with his own hands in his free time. So when we, when we hear people on the phone, our homeless providers, and we talk to them, we know that they're bought into the vision to helping these people. It's not just collecting a paycheck because we have the same heart for it, too. So I, I would agree with staff in that if it's, if we start to see that, you know, these organizations are moving in another direction, then that's when I would start to bring up, making that change, but I'm not seeing that right now. So, yeah.
Yes. Gary?
Well, I agree with everything that Phil has said, especially the, the city count. If we can't, if we can't measure it, we can't manage it. So we have to know what's going on. The shower program, I think, is great because that's, that's going to draw people from all of El Cajon. And, and when we compare that to our database, we're getting a lot of information there. The storage program, again, I, I agree with Phil, that's not a good thing. Too much trouble, too much cost. And I think we need to keep applying for funding. And so, and I'm very happy with our homeless partners. They do have a heart for this. And it takes a special kind of person to deal with the homeless. I'm looking at our representatives from ECTLC right now because it's, you know, they're not always very predictable, and you never know what they're going to do for a certain percentage of them. And it's, and you really have to have a heart to, to do that. So I agree with the, the staff recommendations.
Okay. We're going to come back to discussion, but I, I just have one last question. Graham, if we allow these, these showers through the rescue mission, would the rescue mission have an opportunity at that point to try to make contact with these people and bring them into their, some of their other programs?
That's the goal. The, the ultimate goal is to provide a service and then make that offer for them to get into a shelter. And they, as you know, they offer shelters in national cities, soon to be in Vista and also in downtown San Diego.
We might actually see less people on the streets as a result.
Correct.
I'm in favor of that. Okay.
I have a quick question about that, too, Mr. Mayor. Graham, I like that idea. The one thing I'd be worried about is that it would be, it's not a static location for the, for the showers. It would be rotational, so we're not a magnet in one area, right?
Correct. You know, we would probably, and it may be even situational.
Got it.
Depending on where we know there's an issue, and we would kind of use that, we would do an encampment cleanup that same day.
Yeah.
So it's all kind of coordinated with each other.
Yeah. I'd like, I like the idea of rotational and not in any kind of pattern. So it's people from all over the county aren't coalescing, you know, to one location. Let's take care of the people on our streets first.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate everybody's hard work on this. And I'm going to ask if we have any speaker cards?
We have three speaker cards. The first one is from Evan Anwell.
We're good. You, you spoke very well, I appreciate it.
Our second speaker is Joe Burley.
Hello, sir. Welcome.
Yes. Hello, members of the council. My name is Joe Burley. I am the new CEO of Home Start. So you may have, be familiar with Laura Tenkerty-Bacy's long legacy. And so I'm stepping in and excited to partner with our Home Start team. Dr. Cox is here, our manager, Stephanie, and the, and the whole crew. And so we're here as a resource and support. I am learning as much as I can, and I think it's just exciting to be a part of a true partnership. I, my core belief is that true change only happens with people and not for people. And it, as I'm learning, we've had a long history working with the, the city of El Cajon and want to be engaged in that, continue to be engaged in that dialogue to continue to do the best for the folks and the families of El Cajon. Even one example, Sheila, earlier today, before this meeting, was even telling me of an older couple that has been on the streets here at El Cajon, living out of their car for five years, and most recently because of medical issues of the difficulty, obviously, of living on the street, using the urgent care in the hospital system as kind of regular preventative work, obviously very expensive. They are now off the street, supported, happy, healthy, and being able to take care of themselves in the way that they want to. And it, that's one example of hundreds of stories of the work that this team is doing and, and working on every day. So thank you for letting us be a part of that. And if anything is needed or comes up, we're open in, in regular dialogue with the, the city folks and, and staff. And so, thank you.
Thank you for the hard work your whole team does. I appreciate it.
The last speaker is Brenda Hammond.
Hi, Brenda.
Hi. I'd like to tell you, and you've heard this before, a mayor once told me, they don't know what to do with you. You're homeless, you don't have a drug, you're not a drug addict, you don't have an alcohol problem, you don't have a mental illness. So they don't know what to do with you. I was signed up for a homeless outreach group. They had me signed up for work on my car, they turned in the paper, they got paid for it. They did not pay for my car. It was thousands of dollars for my car to get worked on. My guy friends in Lemon Grove paid for my car. I'm going to say their first name is John, Graham knows who I'm talking about. Four different Johns, that just, that was their first name. I asked the homeless outreach person to pay those guys back because they used my name to collect money. You know what she told me? Good luck with that. I said, you're fired. She got fired. I, my, our city manager told me she got fired. And I said, yeah, but what about my Johns? So I have been paying them back little by little with money that I got from my mother when she died. My family thinks I'm supposed to go get a trailer. Oh, you get to get a new car, you can get a van, you can live in that. I've been paying my Johns back. Thank you, Home Start.
There are no other speaker cards, sir.
Okay. Bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start?
I think I'm the only one who hasn't done discussion yet, but other people can certainly chime in. Let's go back to the slide, I'll call it slide beginning, or slide close to the beginning that had all the statistics on it. Might have been the second slide. There. Nope. There. Do we have a sense, on the bottom, those three, 180, 146, 506, I think it's 832, do we have a sense of which service provider, which program that those came from? Is there, is there a program that was more successful than other programs?
Yes, I do have the breakdown per service providers.
And I'm just kind of looking for, in general?
We do have a lot of the persons transferred into permanent housing from both Crisis House and Home Start, and Bridge and Transitional Shelter from ECTLC and Home Start.
Okay. So the top two are Crisis House, Home Start, the bottom two are ECTLC and Home Start?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good. You know, this is great that you measure this, and I, I hope it gets updated on the webpage pretty soon because I don't know any other city that provides this kind of measurement. Everybody's saying we provide billions of dollars towards homelessness, and what do we get? Nobody knows, but we know. And this is, this is a great, this is an average of $1,143 per person. I don't know of another city that has great partners delivering these kind of results for these kind of dollars. So kudos to the staff, kudos to the partners for changing 832 lives at an average cost of just $1,100 each. The grant for the Regional Task Force for the homeless, I'll come back, I'll ask that we apply for it. Lemon Grove got 10 million. Holy cow. We, I don't know we've ever gotten anything from, through the RTFH.
And remember, this is, it's actually a Caltrans state grant. In, in Lemon Grove's case, the Regional Task Force has actually did apply for it for them and is managing it for them because they don't have the capacity. But I, I think when we get encouraged by them to apply for it, we're hoping, and I'm going to hold their feet to the fire, that they will support us in that grant application.
I would hold their feet to the fire because let's, let's show these numbers to them and say, this is what grant money gets us. And, you know, we, we've just been absorbing this through our general fund year after year, and our residents would say to the RTFH, come on, you know, we're, we're making it happen, so we need some help. So I'd say, apply for that. The East County Homeless Task Force, yes, I think it sounds like some review is needed there. The, the public, okay, so that's, that's the good stuff that's happening. Now we have some challenges that we're still dealing with. I went on a five-hour ride along last Thursday with the Police Department Special Enforcement Unit. It was, again, kind of eye-opening. There are still people on the streets who want, have nothing to do with getting off the street. It is where they live, it is their community. And we went down into the storm channels, and there were hundreds of pounds of stuff just in two weeks before the last time we cleaned it up. The public is telling us, the public is telling us, this housekeeping has got to end. We are paying for housekeeping when we just, okay, guys, move what you want across the channel or across the street, we'll come and get the rest. That's very demoralizing to our employees to have to do that kind of housekeeping. So we need to change the culture, otherwise, nothing will change. And I'm talking specifically for those who have no interest in the services that we see on the screen. So here's why I'm seeing, the, here was my idea about the storage. Years ago, it did not work. Technology has changed since then. And legally, we ran into an issue because we did not inventory stuff, that somebody said, you threw away my, my mother's valuable heirloom, you owe me money, and apparently the city paid, paid settlement money in a claim. Today, we have body-worn cameras to record things. And so there can be no need for that kind of a dispute. And I tell you, I was with these guys. And I tell you, I was with these guys down in the channel, up on the streets. I'm watching them, I'm watching their cameras, I'm watching their conversations, it's all there. The idea behind the storage is just, and Governor Newsom provided a sample municipal ordinance. In that ordinance, he says, you can grab it all. You have to store it for up to 60 days. And you have to store things of value, I think that it was 50 bucks of value. Anything else that is soiled, food spoiled, vermin, things that are clearly don't have value, we can throw away. One of the obstacles last Thursday was, we had to wait an hour for this guy to decide what he wanted to take with him. He had been asked the day before, five times to move off the sidewalk, and he didn't. So we came back the next day with Public Works, and we had to wait there for an hour while he dilly-dallied around and fed his dog and things like that. That is just not the right culture that we want in the city. Our citizens are telling us, change the culture. If you take their things and you put it in a bin, some kind of storage container, and you have the ability to lock it up and seal it in front of them with a body worn camera to say, is there anything else you want to put in this bin? Because once I close it up, that's your stuff. You can claim later that we stole your stuff, but the body worn camera says, I asked you the question, is there anything else to go in this bin? And it's locked, and it's, it's sealed or taped with tamper-proof tape. That goes to some city-owned facility at Public Works Yard. The staff report says Anaheim found almost no items retrieved in a 16-month period. Portland, 4% of the items were reclaimed. Anaheim, 12% of the items. They're not gonna come get it. But if, if that says people will think about living on the streets of Alcohones because we're no longer good at housekeeping, we're just gonna take your stuff. And we'll store it for up to 60 days, as required by law. And if you don't come claim it after 60 days, it can be tossed. And it's not an in-and-out service, like, well, I just need to come in and get this. You either come and claim it all, take it with you, or you don't. It's not a, not a concierge service. I think if that makes somebody say, you know, this is the only city where they take all my stuff. Again, I'm being very careful to explain, this is for people who have no interest in going to services. They just want to leave hundreds of thousands of pounds of trash, and dollars, and time. I think that's how we change the culture. That maybe they say, let's go to somewhere else outside of Alcohones that doesn't take all of our stuff. I think the people in my district are telling me, try it, try something different. I don't think it's, it's too long to ask, that the money doesn't seem to be a problem. You can learn from the last time's mistakes, okay, they broke into the yard. Okay, but were those, were those containers locked? Were they put it in a dirt area where vermin and things were not a problem, could you get into them? Were they in a second cage that was locked with overhead? In the same way trash receptacles for apartments have a receptacle over it. It can be done, if you said to somebody, I'll give you a stipend to make this program work, people would say, I'll, I'll make it work for that amount of money. It can be done if you have the will. And I'm saying the people, in my district at least, are saying to me, have some political will to change the culture. For those people who do not want off the street, who are still doing drugs, because then they need to go somewhere else, because what, what I'm seeing after last Thursday is, there's stuff that I just don't know how you end up with eight bicycles, and what you're gonna do with eight bicycles. And I know what's happening to eight bicycles. And I see on, on, some of our social media people are saying they're missing things. So we've got to change the culture for the group that does not want to get off the street. I think we should try, have staff come up with a, a storage program. It's not too much to ask. If it results in less pickup for Public Works, if it results in less repetitive contacts by the police for the 10th, the 11th, the 12th time where they know these people by name, that they've moved on somewhere else because they're tired of getting their stuff taken, that's the group of people who really cause problems in our city. That's who I think we have to change the culture for. I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you for your time. Anybody else?
Yeah, Graham, I want to ask you a question about what Steve just says. You know, I'm inclined to be against the idea of storing things, but you, you make a good point. Have we, how much analysis have we done about the reality of what Steve is saying? You know, because I, I don't really have a, have a good sense that this has worked or not worked in other communities. Do you, do you have any data or statistics about that?
We haven't analyzed the idea of using body worn cameras. We'd have to, we'd have to do some analysis there to see how long we keep that data, how accessible that would be in this type of a situation. We'd have to contemplate the cost of, we were, we were using, our cost was assuming renting C containers or storage, C, um, storage containers, like we have in the past. But those were problematic in the past, so I think Steve's recommending a different approach. It's a more expensive approach, but it's probably resolves some of the, or mitigates some of the issues that we had in the past. We can explore that, so if this is something the council wants to explore, we can put a little bit more meat on the bones, think about how to store bulky items or larger items that wouldn't fit in a container, is there a different way that we could store that specifically, like a bicycle? So if that's something the council wants to do, we're, we're open to that.
So would you be comfortable with sending it back for review and having it come back?
Absolutely, you know, the containers, it's even possible EDCO may provide some of their blue carts, for instance, at no cost to the city for the containers. And then if it's not claimed in 60 days, EDCO just handles their carts. There are a lot of creative ways to come up with storage, it doesn't have to be elaborate. And you can put a lock on those things. So I, I think if staff wants more guidance from you, they'd be glad to work with them, but I think people of Alcohones are saying, you gotta keep trying stuff, otherwise it's gonna be the same old, same old.
If it would result in what you're saying it would result in, I'd be all for it. So, let's, at least my recommendation, and we discussed as a council, would be to send it back to staff to come back with a, an analysis.
I, I'm obviously for that.
Is anybody against that idea? Okay. All right. So, staff, how do you want us, there's a lot of, a lot of things to talk about here, do you want us to go through each?
Yeah, I guess if we could go to that last page, these are what we're recommending. If, if that's, if the councils wants to be okay with that, and then add also the analysis of the storage program. I think we just need someone to say, I direct, we direct, or make a motion to direct staff to work on those things, but if there's something you want to specifically take off or augment, we can take those individually.
Let me ask one more thing on the financial support for the East County Homeless Task Force, is that just a grant, a check that we write, or is it reimbursement?
That is the grant that we write, that we've allocated budget money for.
And I think it's $5,000?
Correct.
Okay, and do you know what we're getting for that $5,000, just by chance?
I don't. In fact, we, remember, we didn't pay it for the last two years, partly because they didn't feel comfortable invoicing us for the last two, last two years, because they couldn't provide us that information. I do not know what we're getting for that money. That's why I've not recommended we do it in the past, but I know made a commitment to be involved with them.
Is it still active, are they meeting at least four times a year?
I get emails from them periodically, so I think they are meeting.
Okay. I, I guess I'll make a motion to... Would you mind if I ask one question before you make your motion? I, I would love to get some kind of analysis from the staff about how much input we are having with groups like ECTLC on their programming, and what we're requiring them based upon the money that we give them. I'm always concerned, when a government gets involved, it starts taking away the character of a, of a program based upon the perceived needs of government. And I, could you give us some sense of that at another meeting?
Well, I can give you a sense right now, I mean, so, there are some things that we have to require because we're using federal money, and so there's some basic requirements that have to occur. And so we have a contract with each of these organizations that cover those basics. In the case of ECTLC, we also have a conditional use permit. As you recall, we've recently modified that. One of the things that didn't get raised back up again, and I heard something that concerned us, and we will follow up with that, but they have in their conditional use permit a requirement. If they exit somebody from their program that was brought in from another city, and we know that the city of Santee, it's on Santee's website right now, they utilize ECTLC as a partner, and their words, Morgan, not, not mine. They are to take them back to Santee. If they bring in someone from Chula Vista, which we know they have in the past, they are to take them back to Chula Vista. So, we're gonna follow up with that and make sure that that's happening. If it's not, I think it could be a violation of their conditional permit, so we'll bring that back. But I think for the most part, we, we have an agreement with each of these organizations. We have to ensure that the dollars that we're providing them are being used in a way that the taxpayers would feel appropriate, but we also don't get into micromanaging of, why didn't you call that person and that, and not that person? Or why did you help this person and not that person? Or why do you use blue ink on your signatures? It'd be easy to get into that level, the federal government loves to do that kind of bureaucracy. We try to stay out as much as we can and focus on the results.
I, I'm more concerned in attacking the faith-based nature of programs. As a clinician, I can tell you that the only programs I've seen have worked have been the faith-based. So, you know, I, I think that there's a lot of different recovery models out there. You know, some are based upon Far East religious ideas, some, some are based on yoga, some are based on just 12-step. And I think it's best to let, let people go to the places that they want to go, and let the programs design a program that they want to provide. Are we, are we, are we staying away from the, trying to change the character of the programs, specifically ECTLC?
Well, we are only allowed to fund programs that do not have a religious component associated with them, so...
But they do have a religious component.
Not, not the, the short emergency stay, they do not. And so, that are the, that is the programs in which we fund, and that's why we do the audits, and that's why we have a real clear delineation of what they bill us for. So it's, it's obvious, and the HUD regulators know the ECTLC program and has a religious component, and so they look at that to ensure that we're not blending our money into that side of the house.
So the question is, do they start violating that if they're asking people to go into the religious side of the program?
We don't believe so, because it's part of their core mission, that's what they are there for. An individual does not have to, but if they want to stay there longer than we pay for, then they would have to participate in that program, but we're not funding that portion.
Or are we also requiring them, this goes back to the original discussion we were having about the 45 days? Or is it 45 days, 28 days? We are allowing ECTLC to make the clinical decisions to allow somebody to stay up to 28 days or not, based upon their judgment.
That's correct, otherwise we'd be operating the shelter ourselves.
That's what I wanted to get away from. Okay, thanks. All right, Steve, I may have a point if you want to make your motion.
I'll go ahead and approve the excellent staff recommendations up on the screen, a lot of great ones, and add to staff return with an analysis on the logistics and cost of a storage program.
I'll second that motion.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Hey. Item nine is for an always stop sign request at Graves and Cedar Street, and staff will tell us about that.
Okay, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Olga Reyes, and I am the Principal Civil Engineer in the Traffic Division. This is a request for the installation of permanent always stop signs on Graves Avenue at the intersection of Cedar Street in order to enhance pedestrian and traffic safety, along with address nearby resident concerns of vehicles traveling at excessive speeds. In this next slide, I show you a vicinity map of the area in question. For reference, Graves Avenue is a north-south residential collector street which southern terminus extends from Broadway to Lloyd Street. Vehicles use this street as a bypass to Ballantyne Street in order to avoid the traffic lights on Broadway. Graves Avenue has a residential speed limit of 25 miles per hour, based on the California Vehicle Code. Existing stop signs exist, existing stop signs are on Cedar Street, and it controls this intersection with no stop signs on Graves Avenue. And approximately 2,100 vehicles per day travel through this intersection, with the ratio being 2 to 1, southbound to northbound. Typical average daily traffic, just to give you a sense of what this 2,100 means, is on collector streets, it ranges from about 2,000 to 5,000 vehicles per day. On this next slide, I'm showing you a photograph of the intersection while viewing west. Please note that in all four corners, there's no curb, there's no sidewalk. On this next slide, I'm showing you a photograph of the intersection while viewing east. You can observe in this, on the far end, you can observe that cars are parked along the sides of the road, obstructing corner sight distance for those wanting to turn onto Graves Avenue. Now, on this next slide, I'm showing you photos viewing north and south while on Cedar Street, while I'm facing westbound at the intersection. It is apparent that the corner sight distance is less than minimal for vehicles traveling from Cedar Street to safely enter onto Graves Avenue, particularly because of the parked cars on the non-existent sidewalk. So you can see, on the left picture, you can see the white van, and then over on the right picture, there's a semi, which, when we went out for a site visit, those, those sides of the roads were often occupied. So for reference, now I'm showing you the view at the intersection while looking, while looking north. Oh, hang on one second. I need to go back this for a moment, to the, to the previous slide. Based on the California Highway Design Manual, the minimum corner sight distance, because I didn't give you this, is 275 feet for a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour. And then also for the research, city records reveal that there have been two collisions at this intersection in the past five years, with one of them being a broadside, broadside collision, which also is the known T-bone. And then, again, this is showing you the intersection while we're viewing north. And then one last photograph while I'm viewing south at the intersection. So what staff is recommending is the installation of always stop signs on Graves Avenue at the intersection of Cedar Street. The city of Alcohones follows the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, also known as MUTCD, and uses a point system developed by the city of San Diego to evaluate the need for installation of always stop signs. The criteria used for determination are existing site conditions, traffic volumes, sight distance obstructions, proximity to schools, and accident history. A minimum of 30 points out of 50 is normally required for installation of always stop signs. The results of the data collected at this intersection reveal that we only tallied 18 points. But although this intersection did not satisfy all the required always stop sign warrants, the less than desirable sight distance, along with vehicles traveling at excessive speeds, and the reported traffic volumes that indicate that Graves Avenue is being used as an alternate bypass route to Ballantyne Street are the justification for this installation. In conclusion, always stop signs are traffic calming measures that help reduce speeds and facilitate the movement of pedestrians and traffic flow in the vicinity of intersections like Cedar, Graves Avenue and Cedar Street. Based on the information that I have provided to you, staff recommends that the city council approve the installation of stop signs on Graves Avenue at the intersection of Cedar Street. And at this time, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, thank you very much, any questions?
So we, we didn't hit the number of warrants, but because of the...
So, we, we didn't hit the number of warrants, but because of the lack of distance that we can see at the intersection, it, we're able to do it?
Yeah, it was the lack of sight distance, and also, um, when we sent our consultant out to take a look at the speeds, the 85th percentile speed came back as 30 miles per hour. This is a 25 miles per hour road.
Okay.
Um, but it did indicate that even though we were five miles above the speed limit, it did indicate that close to 50% of the vehicles are going above.
Okay, okay. So, that was the other justification?
Yes, yes.
Got it, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you for a nice presentation. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Jen, we have a speaker card for this?
We have one speaker card from Justin Heffernan.
Hi, Justin.
Uh, I'd just like to thank the city, uh, the staff, and the council for actually going back and doing a very thorough, uh, survey of the, of the issue I'm having. Uh, the truck she was showing on the left, when you're trying to go, when you're going west, that there is a business, and most of those trucks are parked there 90% of the time, so there's almost no way to see there. Um, and coincidentally, when my wife and I left here last time after speaking to you all, uh, we almost got T-boned there. We stopped, inched our way out, and a car going probably about 40 miles an hour just almost hit us. So, I just, that kind of just, I chuckled to myself when that almost happened, because that was the reason I came here last time. But I just ask that you do put it in, and then, thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate that.
I got a comment. Justin?
Sorry?
I don't know how long you're staying, but there is an agenda item Councilman Ortiz and I have later on. We're looking at having staff evaluate speed humps specifically on cut-through streets, and Graves is a cut-through street. So, I realize the stop sign is one measure in that, uh, we're hoping that solves the problem, but if not, we're asking staff to take a look at speed humps on cut-through streets.
Uh, I, I do have a little bit of knowledge about that. I actually, where my work is, I drive up Del Rio, it's over in Spring Valley, and I do drive over those in a residential area. They do work, they get very loud, though. So, that's, that would be my only concern about that. Besides that, though, they do slow the traffic down.
You mean, the residents, you can hear as a resident them going over the speed curves?
When I'm driving, even in my car at 25, it gets loud.
Got it.
And then sometimes you hear cars even behind you bottoming out.
Got it, got it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much again.
Well, thank you. Graham, I have a question. Um, I noticed there, there were no sidewalks there, and I, most of our streets have sidewalks. What, what is the plan to, is there a plan to eventually put sidewalks in, in these non-sidewalked areas?
Um, if it's a CDBG-eligible area, that, that's an opportunity. Uh, if there's a safe routes to school opportunity, that's, that's another one, but that would be the only way that we build sidewalks in residential neighborhoods.
Can we please look into that?
I'll see when they're, when, if they're eligible, and what the funding looks like.
Thank you, Graham. Okay, it's back to council for, um, a motion or discussion?
Move adoption.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Congratulations. That's how democracy works, right? All right, coming up, the last administrative report on today's agenda is item 10 about a land and water conservation fund grant. Our staff will tell us about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about this, uh, grant application that we have. Um, as you know, city council has supported the city's efforts to kind of transform Wells Park over the last several years. Some of the amenities that we've put in have been, uh, outdoor basketball courts, the mini pitch soccer, new restrooms, and then, uh, obviously, we're really proud of the pickleball courts that are going to be coming. Excuse me. Um, so this grant gives us an opportunity to kind of continue that effort and, uh, impact some of our heaviest-use amenities, which would be our ballfield lights and also our playgrounds. And to tell you a little bit more about that, we have Elena Holmes, our management analyst.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council members. My name is Elena Holmes, and I'm here to provide information about the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program and the proposed Wells Park Improvement Project. The Land and Water Conservation Fund is a grant program from the state of California's Park, Parks and Recreation Department and the National Park Service. The program supports the development of outdoor recreation features and has the goal of expanding recreational access, with an emphasis on increasing park safety and community use, especially in a disadvantaged area. The proposed improvements to Wells Park would include playground resurfacing, shade structure installation over the playground, and LED upgrades of all sports field and dog park lights. In order to gauge the community's response to the proposed improvements, staff distributed surveys by posting physical signs at Wells Park, providing a link on social media, and advertising the survey link at the Wells Movies in the Park event. The majority of those surveyed stated that replacing the playground woodchips, also known as FIBAR, would make the playground more accessible to patrons, and the installation of a shade structure would, would enhance the playground area. In addition, over 90% of those surveyed agreed that better lighting would benefit the park space and create an improved experience for park patrons. On the left is a map of their proposed upgrades. The multicolor dots show where the current lighting would be retrofit with LED lights. The red circle marks the playground where the FIBAR would be replaced with rubber resurfacing. The photo on the right shows the size of the playground area, which is actually our second-largest playground space in the city, and is currently installed with FIBAR. The playground resurfacing and LED lighting upgrades are estimated to save the city $25,000 annually. The majority of these savings would come from the decreased utility, maintenance, and replacement costs that are anticipated with LED lighting upgrades. In addition, eliminating the need to replace and maintain the FIBAR at the playground would result in further savings. The grant funding allotment, should the grant be awarded, is $1.1 million. The grant has a 50% match requirement, so the city's estimated expense for the project is a maximum of $550,000. With that, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolutions to determine that the submission of the grant application is not subject to CEQA, and to approve the submittal of the application for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. Thank you, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? No? I guess you did a good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any, uh, speaker cards on this item?
There are no speaker cards, sir.
Okay. Looking for a motion or a discussion?
Move adoption.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right, we have no commission reports on today's agenda. Item 11 is my activities report, which is as reported. And now, now we're at the activities report for council members. Mr. Goble?
Um, as reporter with the notes, uh, two notes. Thank you to the, uh, Special Enforcement Unit for the PD and Public Works for allowing me to go on a ride-along last Thursday. That was extremely insightful. They are all very patient in what they do. Um, and also, second item is, I am appreciative of the protesters who come out, uh, to Parkway Plaza, uh, to do their thing every couple of weeks. I happened to run into California Fish Grill for lunch at the same time. I noticed several of those protesters have a long shot at Urbain Cafe at California Fish Grill, so I'm all in support of those coming to visit restaurants in our city. We thank them for their contributions.
Did you organize that to increase business?
No, but I am thinking of, uh, passing out coupons at the next one for a free drink or something at the nearby businesses.
All right. Phil?
As reported.
Gary?
As reported.
Michelle?
Um, as reported, but I did not go to the lunch with Julie. That's been rescheduled for later this week.
We have two count, joint councilmen reports on today's agenda. I'm 16, is councilmembers Goble and Ortiz. And gentlemen, if you'll tell us about your idea.
Sure. This is, uh, in response to multiple, multiple, um, contacts from people on Dorothy Street, on Taft Street, on Graves, on, uh, Bostonia, uh, many streets which are used as cut-through. Specifically, people use them to avoid intersection of traffic lights. And we've heard from residents to say, you've got to do something. We've tried stop signs in some of these areas. It doesn't seem to be always working, and so, uh, I'm asking, I suppose we're asking staff to evaluate testing one or more of these kinds of devices, specifically and limited to these cut-through streets. So, whether it's done on one or a couple, uh, we certainly think that we could try more to be responsive to the residents' requests. Councilmember Ortiz?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Uh, you summed it up perfectly. I think outside of homelessness, this is, uh, the number-two, uh, resident concern that I get contacts from, and then we've also seen here, they come to city council. Um, so far, you know, uh, it's only been physical, uh, material damage, um, from accidents, um, that, you know, residents have submitted, you know, parked cars being hit, and close calls, things like that. Um, and so, uh, I know La Mesa has speed humps, speed bumps. Um, it is a huge priority in my eyes that we change the culture, as Steve said in another, um, topic, especially of changing the culture of not only cutting through, but speeding, because it's gotten worse in the last four or five years. I think we've all seen it and felt it, um, driving through the city, and if you live on one of these busy streets, I've seen it too on Washington. So, um, I'd be advocating for, uh, Dorothy and Taft Avenue. I think we've heard from them the most out of all of them, um, to have them maybe set up a beta test, uh, for speed bumps or speed humps. Um, and, you know, we track, I'd want to track as much data as possible to see how effective it is, um, to, to curb those speed control measures. So, thank you.
This is a reluctant, uh, proposal, because we don't like speed humps and speed bumps, especially when it comes to first responders, police vehicles, fire vehicles. To have to go over those things, that's a problem. Uh, but the, the current situation is reluctantly, I, we need to be responsive to crashes that are still occurring, even though we have some speed limitation devices in place. So, thank you.
I helped, uh, write the speed hump policy. Uh, speed bumps are actually the high ones that you see in the shopping centers, in the, in the parking lots, and that was way back in 19, I think 1996. Morgan probably remembers that.
Two years ago.
Oh, okay. So, I think we got the speed humps on my street. Mine was the very first one to get them. This part, I was, before I was on the planning commission and the city council. Uh, and they turned out to be very effective. And, uh, although I have to say, one of the issues is that there's a, there's a bump right in front of my, a hump right in front of my house, and if someone is speeding, and they're in a truck with, uh, like a bunch of wood in back, you hear this gochunk, like, right in the middle of the night when they're speeding. But eventually, you get used to it, and goes in one ear and out the other. So, I think they're a really good idea for certain streets in the city. So, you wouldn't want them on a, uh, I, I live on a collector street, but you wouldn't want them on a, a very, very busy street. For instance, unfortunately, Washington probably wouldn't qualify for that, and you can't have them on curves. But again, I, you know, I lived with, let's see, I moved into Alcohona on that street in 1988, so I lived with the traffic that was just unreal, where people were, my, my son and my, uh, wife were almost hit one time when a car went out of control and crashed into the house next door to me. And we had cars, you know, going into, uh, uh, fire hydrants and rolling over onto people's lawns, and that doesn't happen anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I received a, was contacted by a resident on Taft, and so I think you guys, your speed humps, your speed bumps are a good idea. I do know that the city spent time to install s, stop signs on Taft, and we had the lights put on them, and residents, I saw a video today, residents still run the spot, the stop signs, and they complained about the lights. So, I'm hoping that the speed bumps and the time and the effort and the money that we put on to the speed bumps, humps, whatever, work, because stop signs aren't stopping them. The flashing lights on the stoplights, people complain that it's lighting in their house, so that isn't working, and I really hope that this works, because there are a lot of other streets that could use them. And you're right, speed is the second biggest complaint behind homelessness, and everybody complains about it, and there's accidents constantly, the red light runners and the like. So, uh, this is just a beginning. So, thank you guys for bringing that up.
Okay. Uh, do we have any, uh, speaker cards on this item?
We have one speaker card from Paul Garabee.
Hello, sir.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I, Phil, I want to thank you for coming out to my street. I know you sat there and looked at car after car after car just coming in at a flying speed, so I know that's one of the many stepping stones that we have to advance. I definitely want to work on Washington and Dorothy still. You know, if we can get something, at least a, a stoplight there, you know, that's going to be definitely a tremendous help. Um, two nights ago, there was another accident on Dorothy and Washington, so that happened about 10:30, but it was a quick accident. Police didn't come out and anything. So, there's a lot of accidents that haven't been reported on that intersection, but speed is the biggest problem on that street. So, um, you did receive a lot of, uh, calls because of that. I went to every single neighbor, handed out the information. I went on even on Washington Street and handed out your, your information, just to get things going. But I think it's something we need to act on now, you know. You saw from the stop sign to where that car landed on its roof, it's not even, what, 200 feet? So, they're not obeying the stop sign. So, to gain enough speed to hit two parked cars and flip over in the middle of a street in the middle of the night, yeah. Hopefully, I know the, the recommendation says 90 days, maybe we're, work on it a little bit faster. I know with municipalities, it's like watching paint dry sometimes. You guys initiate stuff, and it takes forever to get going. I know when we initiated that stop sign on Dorothy, that still took like over 90 days to get installed, and, you know, they did stripe it wrong. You saw where they stopped. It's like 15 feet in front of the stop sign where the, where the limit line is. So, uh, I'm asking for the recommendation, you know, the sooner the better we can get something. I think Dorothy would be your, your best street to get this program started and implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
There are no other speaker cards, sir.
Okay, we'll, uh, bring it back. Uh, I think it's a good idea. I'd like to see the, um, analysis by the staff. I'll move that. Anything we can do to help, we should try.
I'll move that we direct staff to return to the council in no longer than 90 days with an analysis, including speed humps.
Please vote.
Sorry, I have to reset. Can I get your vote one more time?
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
The second joint council report on today's agenda, item 17, is from councilmembers Ortiz and Metrel. Will you please tell us about this?
Great. Um, we've been speaking with, uh, many immigrant communities, um, and because of the religious and, well, mostly cultural significance of hookah, um, it seems like there's an undue burden on selling those, and so, we want to direct staff to really look at, um, the current code. Um, and I know that, uh, to some degree, the state of California, I believe, has, um, lucid some restrictions on hookah, uh, because of its cultural significance. Um, so, we'd like to direct staff to present findings, um, to determine, uh, what that would look like, um, if we were to, uh, loosen the sale of, uh, hookah, um, related projects. Nothing else. Um, specifically, I think there's a regulation in our code that talks about, um, not being able to sell it within X amount of feet from a residence, which really, um, if, what we're being told is effectively, uh, almost impossible to, to sell. So, um, yeah, for staff to run that analysis, um, review of the code, and, uh, yeah, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else.
Yes, thank you. Um, we'd kind of like to know, what type of parameters are, do we want to set up? Um, when it comes to hookah, um, it is a cultural, uh, staple in certain categories. When it comes to hookah, it is a cultural staple in certain communities, but also just what does staff see as far as how much selling space, you know, floor space, and stay within the parameters to not go wild with selling it, but at least allowing certain guidelines, and yet still keeping with some of our current ordinances on selling tobacco and the like.
Yeah, we want to, and really, this might be an opportunity to, you know, review what the penalties are for selling to minors, maybe look at strengthening some of those things as well. So, yeah.
That's pretty much it.
Okay.
A question for Michelle and Phil. Have any of the retailers approached you or the Neighborhood Market Association about selling, you know, about the hookahs?
The Neighborhood Market Association has not approached me, but a handful of other people have regarding their inability to sell within a certain amount of feet of residence, and that...
Were there, there were retailers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we want to get the full picture of what's actually happening with regard to the sale of that, and if it is inhibiting something of extreme cultural significance, we want to make sure we're sensitive to that.
Okay. Question for probably Graham. How many retailers in the sting operations in the last year have sold to minors?
I remember it being six or seven, I see Tony saying seven-ish. So last round, there was about that many, seven.
Yeah, I remember when I got on the council, it used to be forty percent, and we, because of all the stings, we got it down to one percent. One thing I know about hookahs is that one hour of smoking a hookah is equivalent to smoking one hundred to two hundred cigarettes. Tobacco users have a fifty percent chance of dying from a tobacco-related illness, and there are a lot of kids that smoke tobacco, and tobacco is extremely addictive. So I'm concerned we're opening up Pandora's Box here.
Well, I would, I would be in favor of harsher penalties for people being caught in those sting operations. I think that people that have routinely done that don't deserve to sell anymore. So I think it's perfectly applicable to be able to look at that as well.
The last time this came up regarding the tobacco regulations and the stings, we actually backed off on the penalties and made them less severe.
Well, I, I think, I think we should relook at that and maybe see, you know, upping those penalties, because if there's still six people in the last year that are doing this, then we should really look at enforcing that harsher.
Mr. Kendrick, I appreciate your concern on that, and you are correct. There is a component, a health component to this. However, these are supposed to be used by adults, and as an adult, I think we should be able to pretty much do what we want, my body, my choice, so to speak. So I think that if we have retailers that want to do it or want to sell, and these are not, these were not just like bongs, you know, water bongs or whatever that you would buy in a head shop. These are really expensive and beautiful hookahs. Granted, it's for, you know, consumption of tobacco, but I think if we can at least explore it, we have such a large community that it would seem like we're not being sensitive to their cultural needs as well, and I don't know how that works, but it's, we need to kind of be open, at least explore it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but at least explore it. The community has come to us and asked us to see if they can sell it and keep their business going, and it is a cultural thing for them. We should at least explore it. I get the tobacco, I'm a reform smoker, I smoked for nearly forty years, and so I get that part, but, and we need to make sure that we don't have kids involved in it, and if we're still doing our stings, we can still regulate it that way. But as for adults, I mean, it's adults. If they want to smoke, let them smoke. I mean, it's, who am I to tell someone else not to do what they want to do with their own body? But that's another conversation, I think.
Yeah, about ninety percent of adults started smoking before the age of eighteen. So, and hookah's way worse than cigars or cigarettes, and the government's spending huge amounts of money to discourage people from smoking, because there's a giant cost to society because of smoking. I mean, my sister died of secondhand smoke, went to her lungs, went to her brain, she never smoked. My mother-in-law died of emphysema, just horrible death, and, you know, my mom's best friend died of lung cancer curled up in a ball, gasping for air for almost a month. So, I mean, we're talking about a very dangerous product. There's no safe dosage of tobacco, none.
I read it a little differently, rather than yes, no, to revise the current code to allow the sale of tobacco by a percentage of floor area instead of the current code, which is sixteen cubic feet. Sixteen cubic feet can be in any combination, you know, eight feet by two feet by one feet, sixteen by, you know, whatever. So if we change from that sixteen cubic feet to a percentage, and I've given some questions to the city manager, do you have a different percentage for an Albertsons than you do for an Arco? Because if both are ten percent, I can tell you, the Albertsons fifteen thousand square foot store, if they get ten percent, they're going to get fifteen hundred square feet, and that may be bigger than some of our existing smoke shops. So we have to kind of look at, so definitions of things and how they drive things. That's, that was my thought, was that we are sensitive to those who already have an established business, a license called a smoke shop, which we are limited in the number of having. We certainly don't want to create a de facto new number by having fifteen hundred square feet of a large place. So a lot of definitions, rules to work through, but I support the analysis.
Another thing to remember is, when we have an oversupply of a potentially dangerous product such as alcohol, or certainly a proven extremely dangerous product that's addictive, such as tobacco, some of these businesses are just kind of getting by right now, and they will start, at least it's my opinion, they'll start selling to people they shouldn't sell to, like the kids. You know, like when I observed a fourteen-year-old boy going into a liquor store not far from my house, when I went in there to buy some corn nuts, and he, the kid already reeked of alcohol, and he bought five containers of the little ninety-nine cent ones, that was peach vodka, and, you know, the clerk, who I think was the owner, told him, oh, put these in your back pocket, don't carry them around in the bag. So they knew they were breaking the law. And I hate to think that we're going to do something that could increase the sale of a very dangerous product. And when used as directed, tobacco kills you fifty percent of the time. If it was any other product that wasn't so addictive, they would never let them sell them in the United States.
And, and, Garry, Councilmember Kendrick, I completely agree with regard to selling to minors. I mean, and part of this analysis, and we can add it into there, because it does look like it's, looks like it's added, would be to look at how effective our fines and penalties are and how quickly. I would like to stiffen it, because if there's still six, six retailers that are selling to minors after, you know, however long we've been on this mission to pinch them.
About twenty years.
Twenty years, then they're not getting the message. And so I would, I would like to hear your, once we get the analysis done of where, what is our penalties, what are the thresholds, what are the tiers? I'd love to have your, you weigh in on, you know, what needs to happen to stiffen it.
What they do generally is they say, oh, we can't, it was just a clerk that did it. Well, if you're selling a dangerous product, if you're selling something that kills fifty percent of the people that buy it, then you should have a clerk that's not going to sell the kids. And they do, it's been proven over and again, over and over.
Yeah.
And the, and, you know, the hookahs are so much more dangerous, I mean, than regular tobacco and cigars, and I don't think we need to encourage that in any way. So...
Yeah, I'm of, maybe we might disagree to some degree on that, where, you know, if you're a consenting adult and you use hookah on occasion, I believe that people have the right to do that.
Right, I do too.
Yeah.
But I want to keep it away from the kids, and I think if we do approve this, we should really ratchet up the penalties for selling.
Well, and I believe we've, since I've been on council, I voted on this once, to ratchet it up, and I think that was years ago, we should look at it again. Yeah, we really need to look at ratcheting it up again. So, and I believe the, some of these retailers that I've spoken to agree with that. They agree with, hey, if you're being caught selling, then we don't want those people around either.
Yeah, the other thing that they do is they get busted, and they're, and the way we have it now, there's certain, you know, you need to do it the second time or third time, the penalties increase, and then you sell it like to their cousin. So it go, I think that goes back to the, you got a clean slate again.
Let me clarify a couple things. One thing is the fines don't increase, that's the change we made. It's twenty-five hundred dollars whether you sell once, twice, or three times or more within thirty-six months. If you sell more than once within thirty-six months, there is a suspension, essentially you cannot sell for, I think it's thirty days, no, ninety days?
Sixty.
Sixty days, sixty days. And then if they're caught a third time selling tobacco products within thirty-six months, they lose their license. They have to quit selling tobacco products. Is that right, Mr. Schute? The third time.
And then if her cousin buys the store?
We have a provision in there, it has to be a bona fide purchase for value. We put that in there because we did have situations where suddenly in facing the hearing, there's a sudden change of value. Now, when you sell a business, you're supposed to do certain things. You're supposed to do a bulk sale transfer announcement, so people know that you're buying all this product. We ask for that, we never get it. So it's very questionable whether some of these sales at the last hour are legitimate. I agree with Mr. Kendrick's assumption that they're just a ruse to avoid having the penalties start, having, allowing the penalty to start all over again by a new owner. So it's tough for us to process, to control these, we do a very good job. And then finally, they are allowed to appeal to the Superior Court. We have two pending cases, I think, right now, where they have appealed the decision, some for just the first offense, and they're already appealing the same person, has been, has appealed before, and it costs a lot of money to handle those in Superior Court. But we fight that, because that's the council's directive, and that's why the program has been put in place. Anecdotally, if somebody has sold to one person on a sting or a youth survey, as we call it, how many times did they sell it to a youth that wasn't on our survey? And they go out twice a year. So that's on, any given day, they've, six people have sold it, and I question how many times they've sold it to other people the other three hundred and sixty-four days or a hundred and eighty-two days, or whatever it was.
Yeah, and in case, I think if this is approved, that we need more stings, and they're paid for by the tobacco license fee. It's a self-funded, my recollection is, it's a self-funded program.
The license fee is not enough to pay for the program. The council made that decision, because when we first came to you, it was very high for a tobacco retail license. You listened to meeting after meeting of people complaining about how that fee is too high. You reduced the fee to a very manageable amount on each, it's an annual fee, with the increase of the penalties, because we started out originally with, I think, a five-hundred thousand or something. After becoming a charter city, we also, we just increased it all to twenty-five hundred for any violation, first, second, or more. So that money has, if collected, has been the source of funding the program itself, and I, Mr. Schute's department funds that, manages that program. The payment of the, the payment of the fine has to be made, even if you're going to appeal the decision, but then we use that to pay for an independent hearing officer to come in, and then we pay for it with defending these in Superior Court if there's an appeal.
My question to councilmembers Ortiz and Metzl is that the agenda item talks about to change from sixteen cubic feet to a different method for, are you wanting to add the analysis of the fine thing? That may delay the staff turnaround time, the more complex that you make it. What's your opinion?
My view is that it needs to go hand in hand. If we're going to be opening up some facet of this, then we need to ratchet up the other side of that. And I'm okay with this being a longer staff item to get the thoroughness of, of all sides of this, not just the display area and have it be a ratio based off of, you know, the square footage of the building. So to your point, we don't have a huge display area in a tiny little store. To look at the fines, twenty-five hundred dollars does not seem like a big amount in my head for a business owner, especially with inflation has gone up. So we need to maybe bake in a CPI with that, with those fines. So all of it. I'd like to have a better assessment of what we're allowing, and if we did permit hookah and only very clearly define those, those products, ratchet up the fines and also the number of stings. Maybe we allocate some, some funding to, to have more of those.
Okay, my understanding is the typical convenience store sells about three hundred thousand dollars a year worth of tobacco products. So even a thousand dollar a year license fee would be reasonable.
Yeah, I agree.
Because they have such a dangerous product.
Yeah, no, I agree. With great power comes great responsibility, and so...
That's right, Spider-Man.
Can I weigh in on something?
Please.
So as you recall, there are businesses that legally sell hookah devices in the city of Oklahoma, and I think the concern that, that I think you have heard, because I've heard the same concern from some of these individuals, is that it should be expanded to allow more businesses to have that opportunity. There's, there's two ways to go about it with an analysis of the fine system, and I'll give you an alternative, and you can direct how you want to go. So one would be, as has been suggested, is that we bring back not only the hookah regulations or some parameters of the hookah regulations, we'll also bring back with that the overall tobacco fine system. It is conflating kind of two issues to be honest. of two issues, to be honest with you, and it, it may muddy the water. It also, it, in a way, almost penalizes businesses that want nothing to do with selling hookah devices. And now all of a sudden, they're like, I, I gotta pay a bigger fee if I violate, or even a bigger fine, or a bigger permit, because these three businesses want to sell hookah? That may not be a fair way to look at it. The other is you could direct staff as part of the hookah regulations, is if you have a permit and you do sell hookah, then you get penalized more, um, because you have this, the council has granted this ability to expand the sale of hookah. You now have, as was said, the Spider-Man quote, with, with great responsibility come, with great reward come a great responsibility, or I can't remember the phrase.
Power.
With power, yeah. So, so you could, you could look at the fee structure specifically to those that sell hookahs, or you could make it the broader conversation. I do worry it muddies the waters a little bit, and I would probably recommend we do those as two separate agenda items, because I think they are two very distinct issues. So I, I only suggest that for, or throw that out there for some discussion.
If you don't sell hookah now, you need a tobacco permit from the state to be able to do that, correct?
That's correct. And I, and I understand that in order, I think the proposal from what we've heard from the community is that you still would have to have a permit already in existence to sell. There's a, there's a handful of businesses that are limited to, because of their location, to a church, or a daycare, or a residence, or they're unhappy with the amount of space that they're allowed to display.
Yeah, I would be open to taking it as two separate, uh, agenda items. Um, but I, that's disappoint, I, when I heard that we're still, we still have six people, or six retailers still selling to minors, [laughing] you know, um, it, it means that whatever penalties we're putting forward isn't getting through, and that's on a yearly basis. So, um, I'll just take this one for now, the hookah, and maybe have the extra fines, uh, associated with the sale of hookah, like you, like the city manager suggested. But maybe down the road, we can bring it up as another agenda item to revisit the totality of our fines and penalties for tobacco-related things, because, um, I, losing pa- I know Gary's lost patience, and I've lost patience with people selling to minors, so, yeah.
Let me see if there's any speaker cards on this item.
We have one speaker card from Brenda Hammond.
Hi.
Hi Brenda.
So I've only tried hookah once, and it was with my Caldean friends. It was for a photo op for Starbucks back in the day. Um, I smoke cigarettes, maybe three a day, which is better than forty a day that I used to smoke. And sometimes I don't smoke at all. But, um, I think that, yes, adults should have their choice of what they want to do, as long as they're not smoking around people that don't smoke, because that's not nice. And definitely keep the kids out of it, because they don't need to get addicted to tobacco. It's very addicting. But the adults are adults, and, um, they just need to be educated not to smoke around people that don't smoke. And so I'll add, my mother died of liver cancer. And she was a twice breast cancer survivor. My mother did not smoke. So that was probably just being around people that did smoke. And, um, so just to throw that in there. Thank you.
Thanks Brenda. Anybody else?
Oh, um, it, it's not against Home Start, it's against their employees.
Sorry, I, Brenda, I, I think Gary wants to ask your question, Brenda.
Oh, Brenda, I just, I just wanted to tell you that a lot of organ cancers are caused by tobacco smoke.
Yes, mhm. And that's why people should not smoke around people that don't smoke. If they want to smoke in their house, and they want to do that, let them do it, and let them buy it if they want to. But, yeah, I get it.
All right, thanks, thanks for your comments, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay, um, back to council, um, looking for a motion. I think we've had a lot of discussion about it.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, um, for, uh, for staff to come up with analysis based off of the feedback that we've been given. Um, that's my motion.
Please vote.
Motion passes by a four-one vote with Councilmember Kendrick voting no.
All right. There are no general information items, and no first readings or ordinances on today's report. We have a second reading and adoption of an ordinance on today's agenda. Item seventeen is for the amendment to the contract between the city and Calpers. Excuse me. I will ask Deputy City Clerk to read the title, but first gen, are there any speaker cards for this item?
There are no speaker cards, and the title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Alcoa, approving an amendment to the contract between the City of Alcoa and the Board of Administration, California Public Employees Retirement Systems."
All right, I move adoption.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present with Councilmember Global absent.
We're now at a closed session. The city attorney will recite the titles and lead us into the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Wells. We have two items in closed session. One is, the first, item nineteen is a closed session for conference with a legal counsel for existing litigation pursuant to paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code, section five four nine five six point nine. The name of the case is Kenneth Harris versus City of Alcoa. It's a workers' comp case, claim number one zero 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 six zero three seven. Item twenty is a closed session conference with legal coun- counsel for anticipated litigation, and that's to determine whether we will, the city will initiate litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section five four nine five six point nine. This is one potential case.
Going to make a motion to adjourn the closed session?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of those present with Councilmember Global absent.
Ladies and gentlemen, we should be back quickly to conclude the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 19, the Workers' Comp claim discussion was had and direction given to the city's representative and legal counsel. On item 20, again, discussion was had on anticipated litigation and direction was given to the city's legal counsel.
This is for the chairman of the drinking and alcoholing council. Alcoholic housing authorities associated with drinking and alcoholing is due to the Alcohol Redevelopment Agency. Held this 22nd day of July 2025. Is adjourned until Tuesday, August 12th, 2025 at 3:00 PM.